I will call to order the meeting of the Bellevue City Council for December 9th, 2019. This is the council's study session. Sorry, we're getting going a little late due to a couple of technical difficulties with the microphones, but I think we have everything working now. We have a study session tonight, just one item on it. We're going to adjourn a little bit early so that we can do a reception. And the first thing coming up is place-making through partnership with downtown, with the BDA, and that's regarding a lot of things, but including the Grand Connection. So, Mr. Miyaki.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just by way of background, as you mentioned it, this is with regard to the Grand Connection. The Grand Connection framework, just as a reminder, was adopted by the council back in 2017, and since that adoption, the community development staff have been working on ways to bring the Grand Connection to life by way of some of the recommended next steps in the plan. And with those next steps in mind, I know the community development staff have reached out to the Bellevue Downtown Association to develop and implement an activation and activate a pilot project along the Grand Connection. And this evening, council is going to receive an update and an overview of the pilot program, as well as lessons learned from the BDA and the partnership approach. Tonight's presentation is for an informational, no formal action is being requested by the council this evening. And joining us this evening is Jesse Canuto, our Chief Economic Development Officer. To his right is Chris Goddard, the Public Private Partnership Manager. To Chris's right is Patrick Bannon, the President of the Bellevue Downtown Association, and to his right is Augusta DeVries with the BDA. And Matt is in the back. So with that, I'm going to go hand it over to you to kick the presentation off, Jesse.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, for the opportunity to brief you tonight on a project we've been working on for most of the last year. By way of background, the council adopted the Grand Connection Framework Plan two years ago in December of 2017. The plan called for four early action items where economic development staff felt we could lead or provide strong support. Those action areas were establishing measurements of success, deploying tactical urbanism and other pilot projects, identifying partnership opportunities, and infusing arts and culture along the route. These early action items were meant to support the larger, long-term vision for the Grand Connection. They were also allowed the city to utilize existing portions of the Grand Connection, like Maidenbauer Bay and downtown parks, Compass Plaza, City Center Plaza, sidewalks, road improvements, and lampposts all along the route from City Hall down to the bay. Recognizing and realizing that the vision for the Grand Connection will require partnerships, in February, staff began discussions with the Bellevue Downtown Association about opportunities to begin work on those four early action areas. In April, staff briefed council on preliminary plans, and tonight, the Downtown Association is here to present council with a briefing on the year's activity. With that, I'll hand it over to Patrick and the BDA.
Thank you so much, Jesse. Mayor Chalmanac, Deputy Mayor Robinson, Mr. Miyaki, council members, I want to thank you again for this opportunity to be here tonight. Also want to strongly, vigorously thank the Community Development Department for their partnership, and it truly was a partnership, and that's what you'll hear about tonight. You'll hear how the team took a relatively modest project powered by mutual goals, and it worked across agencies, among volunteers, with property owners and businesses on the Grand Connection corridor. And looking back is really helping us look forward. The gesture of yellow lanterns and high-quality movable seating is a pretty basic concept, but it also is a big leap forward for lessons learned about how activation and daily programming work across lines and through the heart of downtown. We know partnership requires adaptability, patience, creativity, problem-solving, and a lot of perseverance. The Grand Connection and the steps we take together to realize the bold vision can act as a catalyst for our economy and community good that translates beyond just a healthy tax base. That's great, but it also gets to the nature of city building and why people come together in the first place. It sets the stage for even greater things to happen now and for future generations. A key moment for me was standing on a ladder, reaching around tree limbs, zip-tieing yellow lanterns. Lots of people walked by, and they would tend to kind of stop and look up, and with curiosity ask, "What's going on?" And I would tell them about the Grand Connection, I'd tell them about the project, and then I would wait for an answer, and I'd hear, "Ooh, how cool," or "Love it." "Way to go, that's awesome." "Be careful up there." And I could see it in those moments, in their eyes, this glimmer, a stronger connection to the place around them, and it really was a symbolic reaction for the many future connections we hope to make together. I climbed a ladder and cleaned some tables, but the lion's share of this pilot activation was led by the talented duo of Augusta DeVries and Matt Jack from our BDA team. Working with the city's economic development pros, they made it happen and have key findings to share. And I'll turn it over to Augusta and Matt now.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, council. Mayor, thank you for having us here this evening. So what we'll do... This is working. Just going to make sure we're technically inclined here. It's on. It's on. So... I'll probably need help advancing.
Oh, we can see it. Okay, there we go.
We also have...
Okay. Okay. Excellent. So the next... So we can just jump to the... I'm sure they'll get to it. So with the Grand Connection on the first slide, looking through the map that we created for this project, the Grand Connection vision ambitiously links people to destinations through purposeful place-making, from East Trail all the way to Maidenbauer Bay. Some of these attractions have been implemented, some are well on their way to being planned and brought to life. If you look at the big picture, we see that it's critical for uniting downtown, Wilberton, and Belred as one interactive growth area. But we're here to talk about our pilot project and why activation is important to stimulate this ambitious vision. A pilot project starts small and samples the potential. So, where did we start? The focus slide.
There we go.
Okay. That's our pretty map. And that's our focus. So for this past summer's pilot, we proposed focusing a pilot project on the stretch of the Grand Connection between Bellevue Way and the Bellevue Transit Center. We needed to do something that was manageable. And as a member-supported organization, the BDA has relationships with the key owners throughout downtown and along this entire stretch, all along this focus area. To get a pilot off the ground quickly, we leveraged these relationships and narrowed in our test area. This area already sees foot traffic year-round, so we knew we'd have an audience to test our activations. We're well on our way. Our goals were pretty simple: visually stitch together the Grand Connection, introduce color, seating, and have some fun along the way, and generate public excitement around future place-making. So when we started with our blank canvas, we... Once we narrowed our focus, we surveyed the landscape. We took note of the plazas, the building facades, the distances between the buildings. We got an overall lay of the land. I'm confident we probably know this stretch better than any other street in downtown at this point. You look at things differently when you're trying to bring it to life. We were outside measuring the distances between light poles, counting the trees. There are 46 by the Transit Center, by the way. And in seeking permission to do the installations on private property, we learned where the property lines are and dug into who manages what. The outcome, we're pretty proud that what we were able to envision is what really came to life. And you can see just on this map, the orange is where we had installations and lanterns in place, seating are in the boxes, and so you can just see from that one stretch from Bellevue Way to 110th, there's a visual connection on the map. The lanterns, from end to end, we were able to take the concept of color and seating and weave those elements through each property in a unique way, filling in the gaps with activation. We landed on lanterns because they're cost-effective, they're weather-resistant enough to withstand some rain and a whole lot of sun for one season, and we were able to test the solar units in each, in the lanterns as well, for an added effect extending the activation after hours. So once the sun went down, the lanterns would glow, at least the ones that batteries were operating. The seating was nearly full every time we went out to monitor over the lunch hour, and ultimately, we got people talking to each other and feeling like they were part of a community project. So at this point, we'll hand it over to Matt, and he'll get into how we did it, and then we'll get into some key takeaways.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for having me here. I just want to say thank you for having us. This project was a labor of love, a lot of labor, and a lot of love. So, just kind of before we go into how we got it done, I just want to go over the timeline, generally. The project spanned nine months, from January to September. The seminal, from the seminal idea to implementation, that took six months, from January to July, and then we had the project out in the public from July until September. And then just a couple notable highlights along that timeline. It took 24 hours to install the lanterns and place the seating. It took roughly eight hours to de-install all the lanterns. It takes five weeks to order 790 lanterns and have them delivered here in Bellevue, and it took over 500 hours of staff work to implement this project. Making the abstract a reality requires a lot of communication. It starts with the idea sharing, identifying the players and seeking their buy-in, listening to criticism and concerns, and regularly touching base to advance the project and ensure confidence. The idea was sparked by a conversation between city and BDA staff, and that conversation quickly evolved into meetings and an inbox full of emails. We sought feedback on feasibility from the city's economic development team, land use and planning team, and transportation team. We had to sell the idea to the member property owners within the BDA, promising an attractive outcome that wouldn't damage the environment or impede their tenants in any way or form. All the while, there was a sense of urgency, knowing that the summer would be here in a heartbeat. Communication was critical for doing it right, and as I like to say, if you do it right, you do it once. This picture shows our walking tour with the city staff. We ambled down the corridor, explaining our preliminary designs to all of these awesome folks with the city, and the feedback that we got, that we received, was incredibly influential on the final design. In fact, I'd say that every early design that we had suggested before this meeting was re-rendered and sort of resketched afterwards. So that feedback was critical to this project. So I want to touch on a few things: research, surveying the landscape, and prototyping. One of our key sources of inspiration were the umbrellas in Portugal. They add color and life, they're world-renowned, it's something if you Google "place-making", it pops up. But one thing about those umbrellas that's different than downtown Bellevue is that those buildings are very close to one another, right? You could easily suspend cabling between those buildings. In downtown Bellevue, we don't have a uniformed, you know, pathway with buildings really close. We have, you know, large parcels, and we had to be aware that in order to activate the space, we need to be adaptive to each parcel. So that's a unique thing to keep in mind as you activate downtown Bellevue. We toured downtown Seattle, thanks to the city of Bellevue organizing it, to understand how they manage their seating program. There were a lot of key takeaways about how to maintain, manage, and even secure seating in an urban environment. As Augusta noted earlier, we memorized that stretch of the Grand Connection. We counted every tree, we measured the distance between each light pole. I think we even measured one time, I timed myself just walking it. So, not that it influenced anything, but we had to make sure that all of our details were accurate, because when it comes to creating a project within a limited budget, there's very little room for making an error. So we want to make sure if we do something, we do it right. And that also refers to materials. So when you're in a set, when you have a set amount of money to do something like this, you have to make sure that it works and that it's successful. So, we purchased some of these materials in advance, we tested them. I had one lantern in front of my house for a month, and every once in a while, I'd go out with a hose and spray it, just to see if I could knock it down. Design and hardware... So I have two examples to show with you. One is Key Center, and one is the stretch right in front of the Bellevue Arts Museum. We called this one "The Zig-Zags," and this was, you know, we were really proud of this project. It was also the most intensive of all the different projects that we had to implement along the corridor. It's four different levels of lanterns strung up between seven different trees, up to about 22 feet. It took about 24 hours to get all of these lanterns installed. 200, we had to use a boom lift, and we had to spend a ton of time engineering this feat, as you can imagine. So many different pieces of hardware. The cabling that went between the trees were, I think, roughly about 200 feet long, and we were mindful of the trees to make sure that they weren't damaged and that they wouldn't fall down. Out in front of the Bellevue Arts Museum, we went to the efforts of, we had to get creative with supplies, so what can we purchase that makes the most sense? And one thing that came to mind was those lantern arms that you see with hanging baskets. So we purchased about 40 of them, and then we installed them on the light poles along this stretch, and then suspended the lanterns. We used, we followed the permitting rules and used stainless steel bands, and we added padding to make sure that we didn't scratch the poles. So we're very mindful of the place in which we're activating. Now, we head over to the permit application. So we spent all this time doing the research and making the designs, and then we put together a packet. You know, the contents of the packet include like a letter of intent, letters from all the property owners, and site-specific plans for each project element. Now we get to implementation. All that hard work leading up to one day, we took a blitz approach, where the idea was that we would assemble a large group of volunteers, and then segment those volunteers into groups, assign them a captain, and then give them a site. That way, within a one-day period, we can get it done, because we don't want to interrupt the urban environment at all. So we pick a weekend day, and we, you go out there, and then you just install it. Well, it was successful, you know, it all worked well to plan, except for the Kilroy site, the Key Center site, where we suspended lanterns. And if there's one lesson that I took from that experience, is that boom lifts are slower than molasses. That project took twice as long as we expected, 24 hours to suspend all those lanterns. So, once everything's installed, there's three months of activation. So what do you do? You market, you measure, and you maintain. One, let's see. We rebuilt the Grand Connection website to serve as a modern, interactive promotional tool. We designed and placed signage along the corridor to tell our story and promote the Grand Connection's full potential, and we maintained the project on a regular basis to ensure that it was tidy and damages were repaired. It was important that we kept our promise to the property owners, that our installation didn't look chintzy. You know, if there's a few lanterns missing, it would ruin the spectacle. So, we were out there on a day-to-day basis, cleaning chairs, recalibrating, putting them back in place, and on a bi-weekly basis, we would go out there and repair lanterns. And you might be wondering, is vandalism a thing? And the answer is yes. So there were a few stretches where lanterns would go missing quite regularly because they were within a jumping, you know, you could smack them down. They do look like big beach balls. So, lessons learned there. You do keep some of your lanterns on stock, so you can replace them. And then lastly, something I just want to note, is public perception. And it is a buzz-worthy project. We got a bunch of Instagram and Facebook lit up with messages and images, comments and stories. The one thing missing that I was checking every day, I was really hoping to see a wedding proposal underneath the lanterns. I thought that would be the coolest thing. It never happened, but next summer, we'll make it happen. Long story short, I mean, or anyways, final takeaway, I'm really proud of this project. I'm really grateful to the city staff and their help, and I appreciate your time.
And I'll just quickly kind of zip through five or so takeaways before we hand it back over to the city staff. If we look at takeaway number one, stakeholder support took time. This photo was an initial rendering of what could be done on the big tree near Compass Plaza. At the time we did this, we didn't know for sure who owned the tree, whether lanterns would even work, whether we'd procure the lanterns, where we'd procure the lanterns, or what colors they'd be. Surprised we ended up going with all yellow this summer. In a meeting with a nearby property owner, this initial feedback we received was, "It just sort of looks like a birthday party, and I'm not quite sure what you're trying to do with all these lanterns." We didn't know if the birthday party feedback was a good or bad thing, but we did know we had to build our case so that property owners would sign off on our concepts. We revised our plans, took our visuals back to the property owners, and built confidence one property owner at a time. In many cases, what started as uncertainty by the property owners turned to curiosity about next summer, building momentum for what this whole connection could be. At the heart of our key takeaways is the sentiment. Place-making is place-management. It comes from caring about a place so much that you want to see it thrive. Something as simple as decorating the light poles at the Transit Center turned much more interesting when we aimed to get approval from the property owner or manager of the Transit Center, which turns out is quite a complicated thing to track down. The document on the screen is an excerpt of a maintenance contract between Sound Transit and King County Metro to assist with the upkeep of the facility and the transit stops in the area. Just by persistence and curiosity on our part, we were able to connect the two agencies to take care of some maintenance and cleaning that needed to be addressed, and now we have even more insight to build on for future initiatives and place-making efforts. When we were prototyping and testing different installations of the lanterns, we worked closely with the city staff, as we mentioned, and we identified a land use code section that would work for the purposes of a temporary installation occurring across property lines. There isn't a cut-and-dry path to determining, to permitting these types of place-making activations, but we navigated the code closely with city staff. In the instance of light poles, the code section above on the screen comes from a state RCW outlining any installations need to withstand wind speeds of 90 miles per hour with steel band strength, akin to that of holding up signs above a freeway. So that's the kind of bands we use on our lantern poles. This added significant time and cost for our team, though we got through it with strong communication with city staff. A key takeaway from this experience is that place-making doesn't fit perfectly into the city code necessarily. There's an opportunity to work closely with city staff to identify a permitting process that serves the temporary place-making installations and the goals of both city and BDA of activating downtown. Public perception, people liked the lanterns. 84% said they liked the lanterns, 90% said they'd like to see more creative activations along the corridor. And with the seating, 69% said we'd like to see more seating. With the 52% said, that said, did they use the seating? That they didn't, it was namely because they were, it wasn't available when they wanted to use it, which is a great case for making even more demand for seating. It's a good, it's a good story. And when we look at who uses the Grand Connection from our survey data, and we're dealing with about 155 responses in our survey, it's not just workers. Over 50% of the survey respondents are Bellevue residents. Place-making, like the pilot we tested this summer, enhances the experience for retail and recreation opportunities, as well as live-work trips. Building on what we've done this past summer can help to extend the day, keep the workers here, bring the residents downtown after hours. It's good for economic development, and it's good for downtown. And so why is it important? The feedback we received through this process led us to this conclusion: the relationship that people have with their place matters. Stories about how the lanterns cheered up a worker's commute to leading someone where they wouldn't otherwise go down the corridor, this builds the case that place-making makes a difference in how people perceive, experience, and talk about downtown Bellevue, giving people a reason to linger, enjoy, and invest in our community. So in closing, it's important to the BDA and the city that we continue working to make a place that's attractive, engaging, clean, and welcoming to all residents and visitors. This work is complex and time-intensive, but we feel it is critical to attract and retain strong activity in our urban core. We're committed to building on the success of this pilot and continue focusing on place-making efforts moving forward. We're already looking forward to next summer with plans to share a proposal with city staff in early Q1. Sorry, the glass.
And I just want to wrap up. So first and foremost, thank you to the BDA for, your partnership was amazing. We did great work together, and it was, it was really fantastic. But just before we move on to questions, I think what we'd like to do is just wrap up with kind of our two key takeaways as staff, from both working through this activation with the BDA, and also through our kind of analysis of place-making efforts around the country. You know, first and foremost, ground-level activation of the public realm, maintenance, programming, it's very hard, time-intensive work. It's essential to creating a vibrant downtown, but it takes a lot of time. It takes extensive relationship management and building with private property owners, businesses, residents, and also dedicated resources for that work to be successful. I think we often do a disservice to this kind of work by calling it pilot projects or calling it tactical urbanism, because I think that evokes a sense that it's light and easy and quick, I think. But as, as you can see through the almost 600 hours worth of work the BDA put in on this project, I think you could understand that it's really, it's challenging work, but it's absolutely essential. And second, I think one of the things that we want to leave you with is that cities that are truly committed to place-making in a vibrant downtown, they don't do it alone. They rely on partnerships to maintain and to activate and to program the public realm, and they invest in building the capacity of the partners that they have locally to help them support their place-making goals. And so, you know, fortunately, I think these key takeaways reinforce the recommendations and strategies that you find throughout our Grand Connection Framework Plan and our other council-approved plans and policies. But they also highlight a need for the city to accelerate its exploration and implementation of other public-private partnership approaches that support our public policy goals, and that's something our ED plan update is already focusing on. And so with that, we'd like to open up for any feedback, questions, comments.
Great, thank you. Thanks for a terrific, not just presentation, thanks for a terrific job this summer with making downtown Bellevue pop with this. Someone called it a colorless steel and concrete. I actually kind of like colorful steel and concrete, but... So as actually the, one of the two liaisons to the Grand Connection project, Mr. Noonhouse being the other, one of my goals over the past two years as mayor was to get this teed up for our federal partners, and did have to wait a little while, but managed to do that last week. And there was quite a bit of excitement among our congressional delegation, especially as always, your meeting with staff. But a real excitement for how we are creating our new mixed-use neighborhoods with a lot of transportation, and when they could see the slide of what downtown Bellevue is today and what the Wilberton neighborhood can be tomorrow, and grow together, they really understood why we need to bridge 405 and to make that connection, not just for vehicles with motors, but for people to walk and to bike and to make that connection. And we talked about, I did use the term tactical urbanism, and they were very fascinated by it. And so, next year, make a concerted effort to get both of our senators out here, make sure that Adam is here, and that we get Susan to come out for it. There was quite a bit of excitement for it, and also that can build some excitement as we go through the planning for the Wilberton neighborhood, as that moves from the CAC to the reality of doing the planning commission. So, great work, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Noonhouse.
Sure, I can hear me okay on this? Okay, great. Great presentation, great effort on this. I love this, and I heard individually from so many people that noticed it and were asking questions, and what's this Grand Connection, what does it mean, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's a great, great, great project. Couple of questions that I did have on your presentation tonight. So one of the respondents about... So one of the respondents about more creative activations along the route in the future, what does that mean exactly? Did you get any examples of what that meant? What is creative? What are the creative activations where people embarking upon you or suggesting?
I guess I'll answer that. I think the creative activation, building on the lanterns, I think we still have a few hundred of those in our office. You might see those again. I think that that's open for discussion, and that's a partnership with city staff. We've, we've looked at even curating, having a curator come out who's done this in other communities, and consulting with what's worked elsewhere. We did all this heavy lifting on our own, and we definitely learned that that might not be where our strongest contribution to the project may be. So bringing in other curators, local artists, potentially building on the bellwether project as well, tying it all together, I think that we have within the BDA the relationships and the leverage to kind of execute and make it happen, but then that there can be others that can come out with more creative. And when I say creative, I mean that's somebody more creative than our team to kind of...
Oh, I think you guys were plenty creative, but I was just curious what kind of feedback you did receive. But I love the idea of tying in artists, tying in bellwether, and tying it to more of a, you know, entire city project. I think that's great. So are we going to stick with the yellow, or are we looking at other colors?
That's the question.
Not that I'm opposed to it, because it really does, it really does pop, and it was very noticeable for sure. Is there anything that city could have done? Because you did mention city code in the presentation here. Was there anything that we could have done to have made this project easier, or something we should look at for future use that we might need to either change or adopt, or...
I think, I think the biggest one is the one I hit on, just that there isn't really a cookie-cutter place for us to go for these kind of temporary installations. And so, we were able to navigate it and come up with something that works, and we were able to do it in our timeline, which is a huge accomplishment. But just something that, that we could direct entities like the BDA to, to say, okay, if you want to put something up that's only going to be up for three months, or only going to be up for, for six months, that it's not a permanent installation that needs, that needs, we should just discuss that, you know, discuss, does it need the steel bands or whatever has been asked of us? So, but I think that, that really could be a back-and-forth conversation about what the city's goals are around placemaking, and, and, you know, we could go back and forth on that. Did you have thoughts, Matt?
Yeah, actually, I think that's the beauty of this pilot project, is like figuring out what doesn't work or what's complicated. And, you know, this is new, you know, the first contiguous like project to go through downtown Bellevue. And, you know, most of the time, property owners will go out and do their own thing because they own their property, but we're using Right Away, and we're trying to build confidence not only with the city, but the property owners and ourselves. So we do get to these points where, you know, safety is paramount. We have to make sure that these lanterns, even though they don't weigh a pound, don't hurt anybody. And so, if it's new, and there isn't, if there are no guidelines to guide our decisions, then we're going to have to reference something. And in this case, it just happened to be a wash dot, you know, piece of ruling. So, you know, I think in the future, you know, moving forward, as we get excited about activating the corridor, it could be a fun project to talk about, what are the guidelines? Like what would, what would we like to see? You know, what are the existing conditions in downtown Bellevue, and how can we leverage it in a sensible, safe way so that we can activate it with color and fun?
Right, right. That's great. And again, great job, and actually, I love the creative public outreach tactic by having Patrick trying to hang things and talking to residents as they're walking by. Appreciate that, so thank you. Mr. Stokes.
Yeah, this is really exciting. Just thinking back at flashbacks of eight BDA trips, and one of the things that, it's neat to see what we started, what we did in those trips kind of come to light here. And I don't think we've seen anything that is contiguous and has this potential as what we have here. But I remember, you know, vividly the, of course, the trip, the famous one going in Denver. But in thinking back, there were none of these pieces along there. The hike itself and the grandeur of all these different things was what was interesting, and it got you from one place to another in different transitions, but you just didn't have these added things to it. So, and we saw some of those, well, in Denver and the Varmer Street, we saw the lights and things there. So it's just been, and then going to Dallas, the latest one, seeing what they did with the lid and the park and all that. It's just, and BDA is the absolute best organization then to bring this and work with us on this, so, just amazing. And that continuity and all that experience over this time period, and it's, and the exciting thing is, we were able to take, because the Grand Connection's been in play for a long time, but fairly short, little different concept. And then with the idea of the light rail going across and that aha moment where we looked and said, hey, there's a bridge that's going to go across, and we've been working on Wilberton, and we have the east side rail quarters, we called it at the time, and what do we do? And the Grand Connection just came forth. So to see this at this stage is so exciting, and what we have to do is figure out how to make this thing happen as soon as possible. But it's just great work, and I really appreciate your working together and getting out there and, and, you know, besides, actually, this one person here is applauding what we're doing. They may not like, you know, they have a different view of downtown, but they're saying, come on, make it colorful, make it playful, and that's what we want to do. So fantastic, and let's just keep it up, and great teamwork, and look forward to actually having this thing done and getting out there on a regular basis doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Lee, I'll just come down this side.
Okay, thank you. I guess the mic is not working, so talk aloud. Anyway, great, great work. I mean, that's very, very creative, and, you know, this is something that, you know, obviously is very important for Bellevue. This is the pedestrian corridor we've been talking about for 20 years in downtown. And this is, you know, making it, putting it something with soul, with a color, with spirit, whatever you're doing. I think this placemaking is a great, great, not just an idea, but it's a great job we've done. And the good thing is that, you know, this is a pilot project that actually figured out the nuts and bolts, and you learn from it. And I appreciate Chris' mention. What you learned is it's a relationship with property owners, with residents. That's another thing I wanted to mention, that this is not just downtown, not just business. Downtown is actually becoming the largest neighborhood for the city of Bellevue. People who live there, people who work there, it's 24-hour, seven-place. And I think this is a great thing that we need to treasure, encourage, to showcase. And, you know, when we look at Christmas time, we've got this snowflake lane, and the fair, we've got lots of stuff going on, and this is just one addition. This could actually become a all-year-round thing if you get the residents involved. So you talk of partnership, partnership, and it's not just the businesses, but it's residents as well. There's a lot of residents, organizations, associations, they'll be very interested, and they can actually obviously help with getting on the ladders and putting on the lamps. The only key is you have to provide insurance for them. So that's the thing we have to learn, right? Figure out how to do it right. But the idea is great, and if it's, something works like that, you know, you would count on the resources that can make it happen. But definitely, this is the beginning of getting more ideas in how to make it creative, besides just getting Patrick to work. We can put the whole council to start working together, right?
You're on the record.
And hanging up lamps and whatever.
Love it.
So, very exciting, good job, and I hope we can use what we've learned and do what you were talking about, create partnership, private, public. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, I think this is really fun, too. I certainly had an opportunity to walk down that corridor, and there were also murals on some of the buildings that I certainly took advantage of taking some pictures and just kind of enjoying the vibe. So that buzzworthy, I think that was one of the words you guys used, I think that whole, how do we interject that energy? And so, I really appreciate that, because when we were at the BDA trip to both Santa Monica and Dallas, we certainly saw that. And really, that idea of making connections together, which is what you brought up when you first talked about this. So as I think about it, one, I agree about, let's figure out how to, how to look at our codes for these kind of temporary installations so that they are much quicker to be able to pop up. And then the other one I'm wondering is, you know, ideas from kids, because I think they're just so creative. So, I mean, I think that we have kids in our downtown now, so is there a way to kind of harness the, right, when they think about a pedestrian corridor, what might they want to see? And then, you know, is there an opportunity for geocaching or some kind of a fun games along the path? I don't know, something fun like that, or... And then the idea of, I like the, imagining the possibility of having a consistent yellow lanterns and chairs this time, but I'm wondering, as you think in the future, maybe it's pop-ups where those property owners, as long as they stay within the theme, can maybe come up with their own slightly different creative thing? I don't know if that's possible. And yet, certainly, you've laid the groundwork for what this looks like, and when I think about it, you know, is there a path that makes it more of a loop instead of a one-way? You know, might be a possibility. And perhaps, last time, we were talking about how to create more safety for both pedestrians, bicycles, and cars, right? Maybe that pathway could have some, some little signs or something just to kind of send that subliminal message about, you know, being safe. I don't know. So anyway, I just think this is really fun, and I look forward to seeing what you guys will come up with next time. And I'm glad to hear the mayor talk about the fact that at the federal level, we may be able to move something along, because in March, Councilmember Lee and I actually met with our legislators and planted the seed about the Grand Connection. So the more we continue to plant that seed, hopefully, we can get some funding out of it. Thank you.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Robinson.
Thank you. What a great example of a public-private partnership on a small scale. That was, that was nice to see what's possible, and now you've raised the bar for the downtown experience. I don't think there's any going back. So I'm really looking forward to what's next and how we can expand on it. How were the, how were the property owners' response at the end of the, of the experience?
I think generally, it was good feedback. I mean, I think the story we like to tell is the beginning, from the beginning of, I don't know what, I don't know what you're trying to do here, to, you know, what's, what are you guys going to do next summer? And I think, I think our learning was to build on, on that momentum and to see what, and to your point, Councilmember Zahn, the, see what the property owners can come up with on their own. So that they, they saw, we wanted to take this off their, their shoulders and just prove to them what it, that it could happen, and that we could, we could get it done and not ask much of them. We didn't have them lift a finger besides, we needed a letter of approval from each property. But next summer, I think, I think that's, that's an opportunity. You know, look at each property as a creative idea that we've tossed around, is make it kind of playful between properties, where each property is kind of given some raw materials and they're, have an opportunity to showcase their property. Yeah, not necessarily a competition, but, but they all have crews that do this kind of stuff for their property. We had to strap together a crew to do this, so looking at how we can leverage that, and I think, I think that's sort of a next step, is to see what the private properties will be willing to contribute.
Yeah, so I think not just how you can expand on the ideas, but expanding on the public-private partnership aspect of it is going to be really helpful in leading up to the Grand Connection. So thank you for all your good work. It's amazing what a little yellow lantern can do.
It is. And I, I will just echo the comments of the public-private partnership. I think that is what went over very well in the discussions and, you know, take these forward with our legislators as time goes on. That concept that, as we were doing the downtown, the downtown livability plan, that owners of property wanted the Grand Connection to cross their property. It wasn't as if they were saying, well, go over there. They were saying, how do we integrate it within a part of our property? And so to be able to see that a property owner wants this, that they're engaged, I think will be another important aspect of this, that it's not just a government-funded project, but rather, the community is not only invested in wanting it, but they're invested in paying for it. And finally, the lesson of the TIFI alone, I think, was, A, the agency had money, B, they wanted shovel-ready projects, is what the federal government has called it. I look at it as investment-ready projects. So how do we get this project ready to go so that when you eventually go back, and this is probably a few years off, you can go back and identify the program at the federal level, identify the program at the state level, identify it at the county level, and identify it on how we want to work with our private interests on both sides of the freeway to make this, to make this a reality. And I think that's the way it will be, not only memorable, but doable, which has always been the charge on this. Thanks very much. We are going to recess for an hour. We will come back into our main session. Tonight's a really important night. We get to swear in the new council members. I shouldn't say new, we get to swear in the re-elected council members and one new council member, because I guess someone just can't cut it. So he's going to say goodbye. So we will be in recess for a little over an hour, and then we'll be back in session today. Thank you. I will call this meeting of the Bellevue City Council to order. It is Monday, December 9th, 2019. This is the regular council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Chellinak.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Noonhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
We are all here. Next is the flag salute. Would you all please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you all very much. The, the first order of business is congratulating and swearing in the council members who have won their terms of election for 2020 through 2023. And so we will move to that. I know Mayor Lisa O'Toole is, oh, mayor, Judge Lisa, Judge Lisa, I'm, actually, that's probably a demotion. So Judge Lisa O'Toole is here to do the swearing in of our council members. Are we going to do the, all four at once? Are we going to do them individually?
Together.
What's that?
Together.
Together. Okay, so I would ask that Councilmembers Robertson, Zahn, and Stokes, along with Councilmember-Elect Jeremy Barksdale, come to the front, and would ask that Judge O'Toole come forward. Thank you. And we will proceed with the swearing in.
I'll have you each raise your right hand. I, please state your name.
I, Jeremy Robertson.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of the city of...
Of the city of Bellevue.
Position number...
Position number one.
...for your term.
For your term.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of this office...
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law...
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain...
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the State of Washington...
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations.
We're going to stand at ease for a few minutes. And if individuals wish to get photographs, family photos taken, this would be a great time. So as soon as they sign it and make it official, because nothing is official in government until it's actually signed off on. And we'll stand at ease then for about five minutes. Thank you. Okay, we will come, we'll come, oh, great. We'll come back from our brief break. And I don't understand why there's something on here as a commendation. I haven't signed anything.
May I take over from here?
I will yield, I will yield the gavel.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lee, would you please read the commendation?
Thank you. It's just my pleasure, as I guess the longest-serving council member, I have the honor to read the following commendation. So whereas we honor John Chalmanac for his 16 years of service to Bellevue, including four terms on the city council, beginning in 2004, two terms as deputy mayor in 2006 and 2007, and in 2016 and 2017, and as mayor in 2018 and 2019. And whereas John entered public service, when he joined the Planning Commission just prior to running for city council in 2003, he helped lead our position to a ballot measure that would have changed Bellevue's form of government. And whereas, working collaboratively with his fellow council members, John supported Light Rail through Bellevue, zoning and land use changes that positioned Belred for smart growth and an affordable housing strategy. And whereas, over the course of his service, John has dedicated himself to creating memorable places for the community together. These projects include the completion of Downtown Park, Maiden Bow Bay Park, Surrey Dance Park, and the developing Grand Connection. And whereas, John has been a steadfast advocate for individuals in need through his support of the region's human services providers and the creation of a permanent and year-round shelter in Bellevue. And whereas, while John has occupied the leadership role on the council over the last four years, Bellevue has experienced skyrocketing growth and vitality, with improvements to our transportation network to support it. Now therefore, we, the deputy mayor and city council members of Bellevue, do this ninth day of December in the year 2019, hereby commend John L. Chalmanac for his years of service to the city and for the contributions he has made to the future of Bellevue. His leadership and dedication to public service offer examples for others to emulate and highlight the difference that one person can make. Signed by all the council members. Thank you.
Thank you. John, would you each like to say a little something?
About starting with me?
So normally we have a three-minute rule. I'm going to instill the one-minute rule.
Yeah, I have been talking to John, you know, this is the time we really can take lots of time to talk about him. So you can stay here and, no, we'll make it short. To honor, you know, his last meeting with us. Indeed, you know, we were very moved by the attribution to him last hour. And, you know, John and I went back a long way. We knew each other. We're both active in politics. And he served as the chief staff member for the King County Republican Party and Stonewall Republican Party. And he used to be a Republican. So when I was elected on the, to serve the, George W. Bush's SBA Regional Administrator, he's the first person to came to my mind. I wanted to hire to help me because he's articulate, he's very excellent in communication, he knows politics, he knows the community, and he's somebody that really is indispensable if you want to get something done. And so unfortunately, he turned me down. And as a proof, I think he made the right decision. And he now doesn't have to play partisan politics. And he's indeed served the community well, the local community of Bellevue, by not, you know, being stuck in a very narrow partisan position. So everything else, everybody has said about him has said, so I don't need to add anymore. Unless, I have two more minutes to say, but I don't think I will abuse that privilege. So I will quit when I still have time left for my three minutes. Okay, so we'll miss you, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad. I very much appreciate that. Is there anybody else who, uh-oh. Mr. Noonhouse. Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Anyone knows me knows I like to be succinct, but in this case, I'm not going to be. I might even go longer than Conrad this evening. But, you know, people enter politics for many different reasons, and some to fulfill a calling to duty, others are guided by a personal connection to an outcome of an issue, others want to advance a political ideology. But as you heard earlier tonight, for John, it was speed bumps. But make no mistake, elective office is a challenging endeavor, requires a lot of intense energy, quiet contemplation, as well as a lot of long hours of reading, bland studies filled with data to formulate opinions on a wide variety of subjects. Politics, politicians, and elected representatives are often represented by animals, as a lot of you probably are aware. As an elected official who interacts with many who served the public in elected office and career government service, I can tell you that many of our representatives do acquire these animal traits. The attributes of an owl, with its ability to see in the dark and zero in on a resource, is an essential characteristic in a life of politics. Shedding negative comments like a duck sheds water is vital. Being steadfast and purposeful like a tortoise is often required. We can go on for hours applying these animal traits and create the ultimate elected representative. In political life, there are times when you meet someone who has mastered the best traits of the animal world. Although only working with John for two years, such is the case with Mayor Chalmanac, or now known as Mayor John the Abundant Chalmanac. John has the traits of the duck, the owl, the eagle, the bull, the tortoise, and yes, the bear. He can soar above the fray like an eagle to see a solution and see a complex, and see a solution to a complex problem. Like the duck, he quickly and easily lets the mundane roll off so he can stay focused on the task at hand. Like the tortoise, steady and slow, and the bull, strong and powerful, John plans and fights for his beliefs. Everyone who has worked with John knows that although his presence is calm and mild-mannered, he has the strength, stamina, and tenacity of a bear, not just figuratively. We all know the story of John fighting for his life against an unprovoked bear attack while at his cabin back in 2010. The bear, like many political foes over the years, underestimated John's abilities that day. Although John was torn, battered, and bleeding, it was the bear that retreated into the woods. Throughout his professional career, John's worn many hats, all of which sharpened his understanding of how to navigate the maze of government and regulatory policy affairs. As a fellow council member, it's been a pleasure to work with him on practically every issue. In my mind, he truly is a champion of human services and a champion of practical solutions for the city of Bellevue. Strongly believes that the duty of government is to improve the lives of people now and in the future. He understands the need for planning and is always ready to delve into the data and the details of a report after reaching a conclusion. Although astute in study, John possesses a natural ability to engage with people from all walks of life. If he doesn't know the ins and outs of a particular issue, he's always ready to study it and become involved securing a solution. Over the last 15 years as an elected council member, deputy mayor, and mayor, John has served the residents of Bellevue with a wealth of experience. Along with his private sector experience in communication and public policy, John Chalmanac ran for Bellevue City Council, determined to make a difference for today's residents as well as for the future of the city. As his colleague, I can tell you, John accomplished his goal of being a caring, concerned representative, always mindful of the needs of the present as well as the future residents of Bellevue. John's worked with allies and protagonists through many complex issues, achieving solutions for our city. As John leaves city government, I believe everyone in Bellevue, like myself, will miss his leadership, his friendship, his policy skills that have made City Hall a better organization over the last 15 years. Aside from the time that he has personally dedicated to issues such as affordable housing, transportation, future planned growth, John has undertaken over two dozen council assignments and appointments throughout his time as an elected official. Even in disagreement, as you've heard tonight, John has always been fair, pleasant, willing to explain and compromise to reach the best decision for the residents of Bellevue. It's been an honor to serve alongside John on the Bellevue City Council. Like council members, John spent many extra hours on nights and weekends away from his family, fighting for the residents of Bellevue. Just as his wife Lynn and daughters will now enjoy more time with him, we, the chambers of the city council, and the chambers of the city council, will spend more time missing his calm, studied approach in executing the duties of the city council. As John moves on to new horizons, we wish him well in this new undertaking. Not only will I miss his camaraderie, the guidance, support, and friendship, I'll also miss being able to say that I worked with a man who wrestled a bear with his bare hands. So thanks, John, for all you have done. I wish you, Lynn, Megan, and Morgan, much love, peace, and happiness in the years ahead. I only have one word of advice, because we all know how competitive you are, John, and how much you like sports, but currently the record is John, one, Bear, zero. Let's keep it that way.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for holding that to two minutes. Councilmember Robertson.
I don't think our new councilmember-elect Jeremy Barksdale realized that in order to fill John's shoes, he needs to wrestle a bear. So if he's still here, he has his task over the holidays. So, you know, John, I'm really going to miss you. You have been a leader in Bellevue since I first got involved in the city. When I joined the Planning Commission, you were on the Planning Commission. And I didn't realize you'd only been on the Planning Commission less than a year when I joined because you seem to just have all the knowledge and have it all together. And then you shortly thereafter got elected to council. And just your steadfast leadership over the last 16 years has just been awesome. You really have always, I've never doubted that you have always looked for the best solution for the people, maintained that trust of the voters, and always tried to do the right thing, even when, in my opinion, your vote was the wrong thing. So, not very often, but I just, I said that to him in private. I said, I want to say that on a dais. He said, you should, it's funny. But, so, you're the only one laughing, so maybe I shouldn't have said that. So, you know, and it's, and yeah, we don't always agree, but I always knew that you were working on what was the best for the city. And we have done some great, you've done some great work for the city, and we've done some great work together. I was listening to all the speakers and seeing how packed the chamber was and how much respect the community has for you. And it's really, you've planted a seed that has grown into an amazing, not just an amazing tree, an amazing forest, or some might say a jungle, like down in the Amazon. And, you know, that's going to continue to bear fruit for years. I mean, the work that you have done on this behalf of the people of this city, whether it's parks, land use, the budget, you know, making sure that we keep the trust of the people, making sure that we look after the people. I was on the council when we raised the human services budget, and you really fought hard for that. We were cutting everything. I think that was probably the only fund that we didn't cut. We expanded it. And so, you know, that's, it's just wonderful, the heart and passion and knowledge and leadership you have provided to this city. And a lot of people have talked about John's ability to be a communicator. He, you always could get the right quote in the paper because you just have a way with words. It's like, man, he just has a way with words, whether it's writing it as, you know, one of the primary authors of the vision or on the dais. You just really can do it. And it's, you could say things better than most of us can say them, and it captured what we were doing in such a great way. So, yeah, definitely going to miss you. I also want to tell one of your secrets to the people in the audience. John has an endorsement. Every campaign he has run on his, you can look on his website, I don't know if it's still up, Glenn Morangy. And he listed it. I remember my first council retreat, I think Grant tried to tell me that the new person had to bring the good Scotch. And I said, Grant, I am not grown up enough to drink Scotch, but I'll bring tequila. But there was a lot of Scotch that was drunk over the years, and I'm glad that you enjoyed it. Now you have more time for that? Now you have more time for that, and you can now drink Scotch during council meetings. Anyway, we will miss you desperately, or dearly, dearly.
What's that?
This is iced tea. I don't drink Scotch. I'm still not grown up enough for Scotch. But, anyway, it's just been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. I appreciate that. Janice, do you?
Yeah, John, I want to say something too, because I've been on council two years, which means that my entire time, other than two meetings in 2017, was with you as the mayor. And I've really appreciated your leadership and really the steady hand at the helm, because we've taken on some really tough issues the last two years. And I think that, you know, politics is very local, and it's very complicated. So I appreciate the fact that you continue to resonate and lead with seven strong, because frankly, it's much easier to be a single person, just plowing through the middle. So bringing seven along takes a lot of work. And so when I thought about what I wanted to say, I actually asked Google what the definition of leadership is, and right at the very top, it popped out that leadership is the art of motivating a group of people to act towards achieving a common goal. He is the person in the group that possesses the combination of personality and leadership skills that makes others want to follow his direction. And I really appreciate that, because I believe that you have brought that leadership. And I was thinking about what councilmember Noonhouse said. You know, you also bring this corporate knowledge, which I really appreciate. And so when I think about you, I think that perhaps you're an owl, but maybe more aptly Yoda. So that the voice of wisdom, I think, does take years to cultivate, and so I appreciate that. And I think the part that maybe we don't talk enough about is that maybe people here see your work in Bellevue. The part they may not see is the fact that you've been very active regionally, at the state level, and then you did talk at our study session about, at the federal level, doing advocacy. That's the work that a lot of people don't necessarily see, and yet it makes sure that not only with our own funds, but we create that partnership so we can get more done together. So I'll miss you as well. I really appreciate your leadership, and I know that your next phase will have more glorious things, hopefully with your family spending more time with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Janice. Sure. Lynn?
So, hello.
Hi there. I'm John.
Yes, John. So you and I are very different. You know, you come from a public policy communications background, and I come from healthcare human services background. You love golf, I love tennis. You love Scotch, I love champagne. But at the dais...
I like Diet Coke, too.
Okay, well, there you go. But at the dais, you and I share the common love for our community and our respect for our residents here in Bellevue. And you've told me many times that you never underestimate the intelligence of the voting Bellevue public. And having been elected four times, I can see why you said that. You're very smart, you're a great communicator. I'm not sure everybody knows that you can communicate without words. So I learned a few things at the mayor's meetings. So holding your head means it's a terrible idea. But I found that by the end of the day, you thought about it, and we came out with a really good compromise. And then I found that raising your eyebrows meant that you had embedded something very funny into what you had just said, and if I thought about it long enough, I figured it out. And yes, it was actually very funny. I really love your sense of humor, so thank you for that. You're an outstanding leader, because you're trustworthy and you're true to your word. If you say you're gonna support something, you're unwavering. You've been strong and reliable on the council and in the community. I heard that as timer at the triangle pool for your daughter Megan's swim meets, you were always on time, and everybody could count on you. So I know it was imperative that we get that men's shelter done, that you worked very hard on that, and your leadership was just amazing. And I know that come ribbon-cutting time, you will be there. And we will always remember you for your courage, compassion, and perseverance for the less fortunate in our community. So thank you for your 16 years of service and for your camaraderie these last six years. I will miss you.
Thank you. I'll miss all of you as well.
Thank you, John.
John, did you?
Yeah, yeah. I wanted to go last. I knew everybody would say all these wonderful things, and I'm not gonna repeat those. What I want to just say is it's been a real pleasure working with you, and we first really started working together, 2011. And there was a vacancy at that time, and I got a call, and we talked about some things. And then during the campaigns, John and I had not really, I've worked in campaigns and politics in a lot of ways, but not done it myself, and it's so different to do that. And I really appreciate the fact that John took me with him when he went out to different places to talk to people, and that was a great learning experience, and I think just really helped me move along in things. And then working with him on council, all the things that have been said here apply. And the other was just working not on these type of things, or working as a group, or working at the retreats, or whatever. It was the times when something came up, or I was worrying about something, or something I wanted to do, or we were having issues at the council. We had had some very good conversations, and I always appreciate those. And sometimes you'd be mad at me, and you'd call me up, and we'd talk, or I'd be mad at you, and we'd talk, and we would figure out how we're gonna reconcile that and move forward. And I think that's something I will remember. I mean, all these other things, and I could, you know, echo and validate those, but I think it's been your willingness to talk to someone when you maybe had disagreed, or we were looking at things a different way. And really, I think we, I think actually, we worked together well, which is good, to help each other figure out. And then working with you as deputy was a joy, and I was very pleased to have you, for you to have the opportunity, and which you capitalize on greatly and move things forward. And I really appreciate that, and look forward to a long time working with you, and you're not gonna be a stranger.
That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So we have a plaque for you.
Oh.
And we brought Glenn.
Mm-hmm. You brought Glenn. There you go.
And the council.
I'm not sure it's supposed to be here, but I will put that under the table. Thank you. I'm just gonna briefly say the history of the Bellevue City Council has been...
I have to tell you, excuse me for interrupting. The city manager, Mr. Miyaki, has something he'd like to give you as well.
Okay, thank you.
So can we all go down here and...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mayor Chalmak, just on behalf of the leadership team and myself, I want to take a moment to thank you for your solid leadership over those past 16 years, in particular, among many other things, for your solid support of staff. We all felt it and appreciated it. Your keen intellect, as councilmember Roberts said, your excellent communication skills, and your ability to craft meaningful policy, and lastly, your wicked sense of humor. We wish you and Lynn the best in your future endeavors. With that, we'd like to actually present a gift to you from the council and the leadership team. So if the leadership team could come down in front for a moment?
Okay. Well, just very quickly, I think the history of the city has been when the councils work together and work toward a common goal, even if we have differing opinions on how to reach that, we work the best. And that's really been the story of the Bellevue City Council. I believe very much in this institution for the leadership that it provides in the city and to the leadership that all of us provide in the region. I've served with 15 city council members. All of them have brought unique attributes to the job, and all of them have made the city a better place. And I really thank all of you for the last two years. This has really been a lot of fun to work with the six of you to continue to make this a better place. And we've dealt with some thorny issues. We've dealt with a lot of really important issues, things that we celebrate. But the best thing is, in my mind, is when you get to the end of it, and seven people say, "This is what I wanted to do." And everybody has ownership in moving forward and moving forward with it. And when we do that, when all of us have that ownership, that's when we're at our strongest. So, thank you very much. Gosh, I did not think this would go on this long. I will say a little bit of embarrassment, but I really very much appreciate everything. So we are gonna move, actually, back into the, we really can't do comments.
I moved and seconded to approve the agenda.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are going to move to communication written and oral. We have a number of people who have signed up to speak. Sometimes it's, we've got a number of people I know have signed up on the tent encampment ordinance, and it doesn't really work well to say you oppose, or you're in favor, because we're still kind of working through some of the, on that. And I did recognize, now I'm finding my notes. I know you've got the, what I'd like to do is take three people on that, on kind of the sides of that issue, if you will, or the nuances of that issue. And then I know we have a number of people who have signed up to speak on a, I believe it's a PUD application, and we can only take three people on that as well. So I know Deacon Sam is the first signed up, and then I think there is a Bill Hallerman, who I believe, I am pretty certain I know which way that they're gonna speak. I know Karen Morris and Nancy Gilchrist have signed up a little bit later, so I think I know where at least four of the people are on that spectrum of testimony. So if we would start with trying to lump those together in the order that they are there, I would appreciate it. If you can call the role, or call those to speak.
So the first speaker would be Deacon Sam Bastard.
Well, good evening. I'll try to keep under my three minutes, if at all possible. There's a lot of different viewpoints on what we need to do on tent encampments, but I really wanted to just call your attention to a list that I brought with me. These are 169 individuals who were honored at a mass at St. James Cathedral just one month ago, and they represent the 169 homeless people that died in Seattle, on the streets of Seattle or in shelters. We're talking about very real people's lives. It's heartbreaking, and there is no good solution other than it is the communities of faith that is often the doorway that allows people to move from completely being disconnected to society to somehow reincorporating. They are often extremely vulnerable people who've experienced some very difficult times. Many things in their life are self-imposed, but it is so often those communities of faith that help them to move to another place. Tent encampments are a very, very small percentage, especially here in Bellevue. Even though we have several hundred, even in our schools, experiencing homelessness, they're dealt with very well. A lot of the water is carried by our faith communities, and additional restrictions, or even the inscriptions that we have, are too many. We need to be hopeful, and that's the place that it comes. This is the place that shows the dignity of a human person, is these faith communities, and we need to trust them and the work that they've done. I'd ask you to be gentle and to be open and trust in those communities that have worked so hard to represent our city in such a good way with regards to this vulnerable population. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're...
The next speaker is Bill Hallerman.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Bill Hallerman. I'm the Agency Director for Catholic Community Services of King County. I wanted to speak tonight because I have such respect for the faith communities and their importance in our fight against homelessness. CCS this past year, we provided emergency shelter in 39 different churches in King County, and that includes the rotating shelter for families that we have on the east side, where five different congregations in Bellevue alone sponsor the shelter. CCS also runs the regional access point here in Bellevue, which is, provides housing resources for folks, including folks that are currently at the tent cities. I'm here tonight really to urge you to enact the least restrictive ordinance possible on tent encampments on religious land. And what does that mean? Three concrete things that means: to lengthen the duration of an encampment from 90 days to 122 days, to eliminate the 180-day citywide ban on the ability to host, and to narrow to 12 months from the 18 months, the gap between hosting for the same congregation. Why do I say that? Here's why. The faith communities in this city are your deepest, strongest, most consistent partners in this work, and they're the genesis of many of the best work that we do together. Let me give you an example. I just came from the construction site at Salt House Church, which is in Kirkland, where together, the east side community is building a brand-new, two-story, 24/7 shelter and day center for both homeless families and homeless single women. That's something that the east side is very proud of, that King County is participating in, the state of Washington, many nonprofits, and a faith community. But what you may not know about that is that the family's part of that project, right? This collaboration started three and a half years ago, when 25 people of faith sat in a circle in one of our churches, looked each other in the eyes, and said, "Why are we putting children and families outside at 7:00 in the morning every day at our shelters that are rotating? Why are we doing that when we're surrounded by such unprecedented wealth and bounty?" Well, that moment started a process in the faith community that led us all the way to now, when we're all partnering together to do something about that. And that happened because those churches and those church folks refused to stop until it was done. And they didn't just pray for it to happen, they raised $2.5 million in private dollars. They testified at city councils all across the east side. They dropped off donations, they volunteer. They're the most deeply committed folks that I know. They're the most deeply committed folks that I know, and some of them want to respond to this moral crisis that we're in by hosting tent encampments. So, the legislation that you folks have been looking at has safeguards, right, that I think are really reasonable to balance safety in the community. Church folks know that tent encampments are not the final answer, but they also know that the inside of their churches are somewhat limited to serve folks with pets or with possessions. But they also know that folks are safer there than they are isolated in the woods, on the grounds of churches. So, until we get all the way there, I just want to close by saying, don't pick a constitutional fight with churches that are your best partners. Don't try to limit their commitment because instead embrace their help, their energy, their passion, and together, let's get back to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Karen Morris.
Karen Morris, address on file. In four pages of wherases that lead this draft ordinance, there are numerous statements and assumptions that neighbors don't endorse. Most surprising is the statement that enhanced public outreach ensured that all individuals had ample opportunities to discuss their concerns. One meeting 10 months ago and a few three-minute snippets at council meetings are not ample. Plus, "to discuss" implies interaction, not separate monologue. Staff did not hold interactive discussions among stakeholders, but assumes those will happen successfully after leverage is gone. This is logically and historically unlikely. My request for neighbors to meet with council members only resulted in one meeting. From the beginning, process focused on a narrow perspective based on requests from consent decree signatories. Broader, more collaborative, and transparent process would yield results more likely to solve problems, and there are problems. Our experience-based suggestions, provided repeatedly for years, didn't appear in the discussion or the draft. The result is a lack of balance. Now, we must hope what happens tonight will strike a better balance. The Washington Supreme Court said these stays likely affect nearby neighbors far more than parishioners, and cities may mediate these externalities. At the last meeting, some of you brought up the issue of proximity in relation to gaps between stays. Mr. Brennan stated that there could be back-to-back stays across the street. In Bellevue, the burden falls mostly on TBT's neighbors. So, as you discuss gaps, please tie them to proximity. For example, distances from TBT of other churches approached: New Hope Ministries, 269 feet; Cross of Christ Lutheran, .2 mile; both St. Louise and Unity, .4 mile; Calgary Lutheran, .5 mile; and both Church of Resurrection and East Side Baha, .6 mile. In Mercer Islands ordinance, the 18-month gap is not just to the same site, but to sites within a half-mile radius. We would suggest that, or certainly at least, that sites across the street or a block or few away, like the first two to four sites above, are burdening the same neighbors and businesses. The Washington Supreme Court also stated that when deciding if a regulation is a substantial burden, courts should look at alternatives the regulations leave open. Bellevue leaves open the possibility for churches to host inside with no permit and little regulation. So, they are not prevented from religious expression of helping the homeless, just participating in a more balanced solution. I emailed yesterday about some inconsistent draft language on the 18-month gap and the modifications allowed in the extended permit process. I hope those will be corrected before you vote. I also hope some lessons will be learned from the issues with this process that will improve things in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Peter Davidson.
Hi, Peter Davidson. I live in Ennui. I'm a 35-year resident of Bellevue. I grew up here. I'm a native. My parents have been here since 1972. I moved back to Bellevue in 2013, buying a home, and during that time, I've seen a dramatic increase in my property taxes. Meanwhile, I'm grateful that the value of my property has gone up, but those increases have actually driven people out of their homes. With that, I've also seen developers tearing down what would be considered semi-affordable housing, while Bellevue housing is not truly affordable. I mean, a million-dollar house gets torn down next to me. These developers are seeing massive increases in property value when they tear it down and build a 4,000-square-foot house. At the same time, I've also seen an increase in mental health issues in downtown Bellevue. People throwing luggage into the middle of Bellevue Way, having to call police officers to have them come and deal with that. But the reason I moved back to Bellevue, when I moved back in 2013, was I have an eight-year-old daughter. And one day, while my daughter was in Seattle, she tried to offer a homeless person some food that we had leftovers from a restaurant, and that homeless person yelled at her. So, I'm very passionate about this. My daughter is the most compassionate person I've ever met in my life, but I have huge concerns around this. Some of the churches in Bellevue actually house public school bus pickup. There's kindergarten programs at places like Pilgrim Lutheran down on Bellevue Way, and if we put homeless encampments on those properties, you're risking the safety of our children. You're risking the safety of the children that are attending the kindergartens there. In addition to all of the unreported issues of drug use, the underreported crime, if you talk about things like RVs, in Seattle, they're dumping RV sewage and black water into the sewer systems, which is not treated. Massive health issues there. So, the real concern around this for me is, if you're going to open up tents, I challenge the churches to actually open their doors, not the church itself, or not the parking lots themselves. Open their doors, allow them to stay in. If they want to get behind this and express their religious freedom, they should open their doors. It's the reality of they want to do that, but if it's going to impact my property value or the safety of my children, or the safety of any of the children that attend public schools in the city and grew up in the city, it's a real-world impact. So, you know, again, I challenge the city council as well to draft real-world solutions, not sitting here and saying, "Let's put a tent in a parking lot." The churches can talk about dignity. They can talk about providing dignity for these people. Dignity is not living in a tent. It's not living in a tent in the middle of a parking lot. We pay massive amounts of taxes to live in this city. They've increased. Developers are reaping massive profits. But meanwhile, my parents had to sell their house because they couldn't afford the taxes anymore. They now live in a relatively nice community in Bellevue, but the fact is, they've been here since 1972. So, let's take some real-world approach at this, and I appreciate the time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Gilchrist.
Nancy Gilchrist. I live at 114-157th Avenue Northeast, just on the west side of Temple Benetorra. So, John, I'm sorry to see that you're leaving. I remember when you sat down with us about 14 years ago to begin discussing the issue of tent city encampments. And as you know, our neighborhood has been impacted by the hosting of the tent city encampments over the years, and over the years have really tried to work together and tried to come up with solutions that we feel are protecting the most vulnerable members in our community in a way that is safe and in a way that's going to provide them with real, long-term solutions, but are also considering the interests and the concerns of the neighbors and the impact that it brings to the neighborhood. And there is, this is a citywide ordinance, but the reality is, as others have mentioned, that Temple Benetorra has been the most frequent host by far of any of the other churches. And so, there has been a disproportionate impact that we've seen over 14 years in our community. And while there has been work that has been done to try to figure out the best way to, I thought it was interesting, someone talked about restrictions versus regulation. Regulation is what a city does to ensure the safety and the success of programs. We can't have programs be successful of any kind without thoughtful, balanced regulation. And so, looking at the latest round that you're going through to try to pass this, please consider some of the concerns and the issues that have been brought up by the neighbors based off of experience of having had these, the tent cities come and be in the neighborhood. We feel that we've tried to, again, also strike a balance and try to work with and to find what the best solutions are going to be. We're pleased that Temple Benetorra is hosting Sophia's Way and think that that's a great step for them to be moving forward with, but we'd like to encourage you to consider length of stay, the separation between the amount of time, the months between the stays, and then also looking at that proximity, because you do have a neighborhood that is very densely populated with religious organizations and has been disproportionately affected. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. So, that's three speakers on that particular side of the issue. We've had two speakers on being less restrictive in terms of tent cities. So, we could take one more on that as that goes through.
There are two speakers left, signed up to speak on the temporary encampment, one in support and one in opposition. Zheng Ting Jing is in opposition or has some concerns.
Yes. Yes. So, the question would be, if you would come forward. Are you more in line with the last speaker, Ms. Gilchrist, or more in line with one of the first speakers?
I want to express my concerns of the encampment. I'm more in line with...
Do you want less restrictive or...
I want more restrictive.
Okay. So, we've really had three people on with that particular side, so I'm going to ask for the next person to be able to come up. We have a rule that we only take three people on either side of an issue. So, let's see where the other person...
But I think I've also never spoke on this issue before.
I know, but we have three people. We have a rule that we follow about only three people speaking on one side of an issue, and when we're done with that, then, because we have held a public hearing on it. So, could we call the next person and see where they are?
The next person is Rabbi Sidney Danziger.
Rabbi?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am the senior rabbi of Temple Benetorra, and I have been there since July. The Torah, our holy book, says in Deuteronomy, "That the poor shall always be among you, and you are required to see to their needs according to how they are stated." Back in 2004, Temple Benetorra was approached by Tent City to host them, to allow them a space to just merely be. Our rabbi at the time, Jim Morrell, said yes. Our board unanimously agreed to host them. We have since hosted Tent City five times. Yes, we are the most frequent host in the city of Bellevue. We lament this. We would hope that other organizations, religious organizations, would step forward and also do their religious obligation of hosting the most vulnerable in Bellevue. We know that those experiencing homelessness have a profound, are profoundly impacted by stability. By making them move from site to site, from city to city, on a regular basis, makes it more difficult for them to receive the services that they need. The ordinance, as it currently stands, does not allow for hosting for enough days or for back-to-back hostings of different sites in the city. We have a lot of different organizations in the city of Bellevue that would like to be able to fulfill their religious obligations towards the poor, just as Temple Benetorra does. We Jews don't believe that this is just something nice that we should do. We don't believe that it's just merely generosity. We are commanded to do it, and we ask that you allow us to continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that's three people on both sides of that issue. I know that we have people signed up on, I believe, a PUD development. So, can we take those in order?
There are five speakers signed up, four in opposition and one in support. So, I'll start with the first one, which is Randy Gaddy.
Had to leave, okay.
Okay. Gary McCowsky.
Good evening, and I'd like to continue my congratulations to Mayor John Chelmiak. I did notice during all the commendations, subject of parks came up a lot, and you'll work with that. And my comments concern a park, so I hope I have your attention. Would you state your name for the record? I'm Gary McCowsky. I'm a resident of Bellevue for 25 years, and I'm here to voice my opposition to the PUD 19-12-11-09 LL. That is for the development of the property that is immediately contiguous with the Cougar Mountain State Park right off of Lake Mont Highway. I'm against this for several reasons. I'll get into it in a moment, but I would like to call your attention to the fact that since its designation, I have as an evidence here, the city planner's email is incorrect, and this needs to be corrected. This is kind of a violation of the public notice. Just this evening, I've received five emails from people contacting me with this email saying it is invalid. So, this needs to be addressed by the board. Over the last, since August, I don't know how many hundreds, if not thousands, of people may have been writing to the city planner to voice their opposition to this and have not had the opportunity. There are a number of reasons for the opposition. I'll try to go through them quickly. First and foremost, if you're familiar with this area, Cougar Mountain, Cougar Mountain State Park, it's been mined for 100 years. The land there is very unstable. It has gash, noxious gases that leak out. In fact, right now, there's a trail closed because it's unstable. And yet, now, there's a proposal to put a housing project right next to it and develop that. Right now, we have a green belt there that's contiguous with the state park, which is going to be destroyed for some rich people's estates to go up. Second, that is a very dangerous road. By your own city studies for traffic like that, when in a lake mound, you know that that's a speedway. It is a winding, dangerous road that has a number of accidents on there. Are you aware, by the way, if any of you live near there, of the two-mile backups from Newcastle all the way to Cougar Mountain during rush hour? And now, we're considering putting a housing complex in what, a land that should be really made to be a park. The road is highly congested, it is winding, and it's unstable. Your own records will show you that that road in that area there is repaired very frequently because of shifting and sinking land. And again, you're considering putting a huge housing project in there. So, I'd like to quote in the very few minutes that I have left from King County, who says, "Cougar Mountain Park preserves the importance of the wildlife habitat. It is a great, big, green, and quiet place." Furthermore, the welcome notice says, "This area is intended to preserve and allow nature to recreate a wilderness ecosystem here in the midst of urban Puget Sound. We know that deer, bobcat, porcupine, and black bear live here now. It is our intent that by making the park large and keeping it wild, here animals will always be able to live." Okay. Putting a housing complex in there and destroying the land is not keeping true to that mandate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vicky Velema. No Vicky? George, are you Vicky? No. George Potter?
Oh, no, you're, I think Mr. Potter is coming.
My name is George Potter. I live in unincorporated King County, just north of Issaquah on Old Black Nubbit Road. I moved here 10 years ago because of the environment here. It's a beautiful area, mountains and trees. And I followed my two daughters here, and my son has also followed us here. He's now over in Port Townsend. The parks are an important part of why I came here. They feed my soul, if you will. And it is something that is once destroyed can never be recovered. I want to see it for, to be there for generations to come. It's too easy to destroy it now, and then it's gone forever. The Park Point Development, PUD, is right in the middle of a wildlife corridor. It is not just the plants that are important for a park or a natural area, such as the Coal Creek Natural Area. It's also the animals. It's an ecosystem. It's an environment. It's what makes a park, a natural park. And I don't want to see that lost. The Park Point Development would be highly destructive to that. It is right at the head, is right across the street from the Red Town Trailhead. And there is no parking on that side of the road now. And it would be, it's just becoming increasingly dangerous for people to cross. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ayona Martinez. David Kapler.
Good evening. I'm David Kapler. I'm vice president of the Issaquah Trails Club. And I wanted to invite you to event the Mount to Sound Greenway is going to be having this summer. The 40th anniversary of the Trails Club is this year, and next year will be the 30th anniversary of the first Mount to Sound Greenway trek. Next summer, the trek will start on July 11th in Clealum. But the important date for Bellevue and Issaquah is on Saturday, July 18th. We'll be waking up in Issaquah, hiking, as we have done in all the other marches and treks, to Lake Washington at the Newcastle Beach Park. Issaquah is going to be celebrating the Bergsma acquisition on Newport Way, which is now our great entry to the Cougar Mountain 3,000-some acre park, the county regional wildland park. We'll get to Red Town on that hike, and we will cross the street and then be in the county, in the city now, Coal Creek Park, which has been taken over, was a county park originally, actually a forward thrust, going back to Jim Ellis. But it's been added to by Bellevue and the county. It's a great park. And walked through the park all the way down to Newcastle Beach, where we'll spend it that night. We will be passing, going through the Red Town Trailhead. Across the street will be the former Swanson property, and it would sure be a great addition to the park system if Bellevue could acquire that property and really complete that long link between Issaquah and Lake Washington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's three people, I believe. I'm going to say that that dealt with Red Town. So I, did we have someone who had signed up in support of it?
There's only one speaker left on the list, and it is on a separate topic.
Okay. Then let's move. I think we have time to move to that topic, and then we'll be, we'll conclude the comment.
The final speaker would be Eva Orlavsky Imadi.
Hello, distinguished mayor and city council. My name is Eva Orlavsky Imadi. I'm a Bellevue Bridle Trails resident already 30 years. And currently, I'm serving on the board of Bridle Trails Community Club, you all are familiar with. It's an advocate neighborhood organization whose mission is to preserve the green character and sustainability of Bridle Trails area, otherwise known as Tree Area. I have recently graduated from Bellevue Essentials Leadership Training and have already engaged with several citywide groups whose mission is to protect our environment and to work with you, city council, on the environmental stewardship plan. Today, I'm here on behalf of PAC, Peoples for Climate Action. I would like to first to thank you and congratulate you on planting last month 300 sequoia trees in order to boost our city tree canopy from 37% to 40%. We applaud any kind of reforestation attempt as an effective step to fight climate change and to remove carbon from our atmosphere. And we are thrilled to hear that you are planning, or City of Bellevue is planning, to plant 700 more sequoia trees and 5,000 native conifers this fall. So thank you. I wanted to also thank you for hearing and engaging right here in this chamber on November 12th with an amazing group of young people who delivered a moving testimony about the desire for City of Bellevue to be on the leading edge of fighting climate change. And we have received a very positive feedback about your engagement with them. So thank you. And lastly, I wanted to thank you for working on revising the environmental stewardship plan. We want to thank you for looking at the, reviewing the environmental plan and also for asking the city staff on November 12th for revising it and for strengthening the climate target goals and then coming back with a revising proposal. So this is significant, this is very significant and urgent. And we look forward to working with you to encourage and support strong steps to reverse and mitigate climate change. And with City of Bellevue becoming...
I'm sorry, but the three minutes, the red light means, I didn't go into how that works, but the red light means your three minutes is complete.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So we do not have anyone else who has signed up to speak? Okay, so we're going to now move to the reports of community council boards and commission. And on this, we have the Arts Commission funding recommendations, which I do believe we need to take action on. So if we are ready for that, hi.
Hi. Good evening, council. My name is Paul Manfredi. I'm the chair of the Arts Commission. And I'm delighted to be here this evening. I will begin by observing that I didn't realize it was such a momentous occasion and that we were...
Neither did I.
And that actually has presented kind of a daunting situation. I'm struck by the rather extraordinary eloquence of our city council in reference to our mayor's departure. And not only that, but actually the eloquence of my fellow citizens. So I don't come here enough to listen to this kind of thing, is my first thought. And my second thought is that we all have our advocacies, and it is your charge to listen to them in their turn. And I want to thank you for that. That's a lot of hard work, and I appreciate that. Probably more so now, after having sat here for the last hour and a half than I would have otherwise. Thank you very much. But such comments are not my purpose here this evening. My purpose is to discuss the grant allocations for the year 2020. So specifically, we will be looking for a motion from council to approve the grant allocations that have been devised, I suppose, by our allocations committee, which is a subcommittee of, of course, the Arts Commission. So I'm here to present those briefly. Oh, terrific, we have something to look at above us. Yeah. So the direction from council will be a motion to approve the Arts Commission recommendations for the 2020 Eastside Partnerships, Special Projects, and Power Up Bellevue allocations. I gather that all of you have a packet, so I'm not going to get very far into the details. I don't think that's necessary. I think most of you are familiar with this. I will then just go briefly through a description of the grant allocations, a few words about what has transpired in 2019, and then a few words about what we're hoping to fund in 2020. So that's the plan for my presentation. I have more than three minutes, is that right?
Yes.
Slightly perhaps. Okay. So to begin with, the grants allocation or the grants are kind of in a tripartite structure. We have three different grant forms. One of them, as I just mentioned, the EIP, the East-sided Arts Partnerships, the other, Power Up Bellevue, and finally, the Special Projects. So far and away, the Eastside Partnerships are the bulk of the funding allotment that we have devised at roughly $120,000. Following that is the Power Up Bellevue. That's actually the newest category of grants that we have developed. And that is for the purpose of increasing the capacity of individual grant organizations and allowing them to grow, to be stronger, bigger, and more effective. And then finally, the Special Projects, which is the smallest in terms of dollar amount at roughly $12,000. But it is, in many ways, the most important. That's my own personal view, frankly. And that's because it is the most dynamic. It brings new people into the program, and it is the most effective, I think, in reaching new constituents in the community. So it's extremely important element of the grants process. It's worth noting, perhaps, that each of these different categories has its own set of criteria. There's a certain amount of overlap, but they are somewhat different. So the detailed elements of that, of those criteria are all, once again, in your packet. But then just maybe briefly, I will mention that for the Eastside Partnerships, three principal categories, creative engagement, public access, and organizational capacity are what the grant applications are evaluated on. For the Power Up Bellevue grants, the readiness of the individual organization to receive such development, the clarity of the project, and then the commitment to expand and develop according to what is provided in the Power Up process. And then finally, Special Projects, as I just mentioned, innovation is really the key element of that. But also public access, similar to the Eastside Partnerships. And then a very important element, but often most difficult, the feasibility of the project itself. So in many cases, we have wonderfully innovative and interesting ideas that are just not feasible. So that's something that the allocation committee will be looking at. So those are the elements or the criteria for which these grants are evaluated and then actually quite specifically ranked. In 2019, there were, as you will see, 31 grants in the Eastside Partnerships. Oh, I didn't mention, the Eastside Partnerships are further divided into what are called the Community Partnerships and the Pro Partnerships. And the difference between those two is that the Pro Partnerships have paid staff that work for them, and the Community Partners have principally or entirely volunteer staff. The maximum allotment for the Pro Partnerships is $10,000, and the maximum allotment for the Community Partners is $5,000. So once again, there were 31 grants total, split roughly in half. For the Power Up Bellevue, there were three grants. All of those are $5,000. And then for the Special Projects in 2019, we had seven grants, one individual and six nonprofit organizations. Briefly then, just a couple of selections from the 2019 grantees. The first one being the Bellevue Youth Symphony Orchestra. I could go on for probably an hour about this particular operation because, first of all, Trudy Jackson, who was the director, was on the Arts Commission for many years. She's recently moved on. And second of all, my daughter was with the Bellevue Youth Symphony Orchestra for five years and went through four of the six different orchestras that constitute this particular organization. So I am personally familiar with how wonderful that organization is. Next, a couple of photographs of the Seattle Tashkent Sister City Organization. This is an older organization, but as far as I know, it is new to the city of Bellevue. And we funded an annual festival in the spring that was held at Bassett Park, which, for what it's worth, is about a stone's throw from my house. Not that I'm throwing stones, but it was, at any rate, a one-day festival that we funded. And then finally, the Northwest Sound Men's Chorus, one of many choral groups that are active in the Bellevue area. And we funded Sing, Sing, Sing program, which is a combination of both performance and actual singing lessons that the Northwest Sound Men's Chorus provides. So these three are wonderful organizations and grantees within our program. But I also think they speak well to the breadth of the type of arts organizations that we fund. In one case, a very large, again, six separate symphony orchestras. I don't know what the total number of participants in that, in BISO, is, but it's quite large. And moving on from that to a one-day festival that has a very substantial ethnic diversity element to it. And then finally, again, to the singing operation, which is both performance and an educational opportunity. So that is, in many respects, a snapshot of the kind of things that we will, we would like to be able to fund. Moving on then to 2020. And then just a few words about process because there is a bit of a transition this particular year. So in June 29, 2019, we developed the guidelines, and that is the typical process. You graciously approved the guidelines in July. From there, the applications were opened entirely online this time in September, early September. And those were collected, and then the allocations committee was formed and then met in November, November 14, 2019, and developed their recommendations. Those recommendations were then brought to the Arts Commission on December 3. They were approved, and now it is December 9, and we are bringing them to you. One small note about 2020 is that it has been the process, the second of our circles there for the city council to approve the guidelines. I believe that we're moving on from that because I think you all found that you were approving the same thing more or less every year, and that was unnecessary. So going forward, we will just establish the guidelines and carry through with those. Okay, so about 2020, we received 46 total applications. Our allocations committee was once again comprised of five people. That's three arts commissioners and two people who are professionally involved with the arts. And they once again gathered in November and selected 32 Eastside Partnerships, three Power Up Bellevue grants, and nine Special Project grants. So the actual funding, the grantees that we are recommending are in your packet. I'm going to go now very briefly and somewhat quickly into a bunch of numbers that our arts program staff have graciously put together, but I think they are meaningful and important. This is a list of performance metrics. Artist groups funded by the city will serve an estimated 1,634,700 residents and visitors in 2020 through a combination of museum programs, performances, cultural festivals, and arts education. This is a notable jump from 2019, where the number was somewhere in the neighborhood of 930,000. So if our goal is to increase capacity and to increase impact, we feel that we are making great strides in that respect. Additionally, the city support will ensure over 133,000 people have access to these opportunities through free or reduced admissions. An additional 2,800 youth will be provided with scholarships to participate in arts education programs. Overall, the grantees will offer programs designed to increase access for people with disabilities, disadvantaged youth or seniors, low-income people, limited English-speaking people, and historically disadvantaged minorities. 2,700 artists, 4,830 volunteers will have an opportunity to contribute their creative talents to Bellevue in 2020. And if we were to translate these into full-time positions, that comes to roughly 83 full-time paid positions. So though arts funding may often fall sort of to the end or in the margins of city business and city budget planning, we believe that the impact is real and tangible and extremely important. So we hope that you will agree and agree to fund these allocations. And with that, I could turn... And with that, I can turn it open to any questions that you may have.
Great. Councilmember Stokes is liaison to arts. Do you want to say anything, and then we'll see if there are any questions?
I thought I'd first move to extend the meeting.
Let's...
It's five minutes till 10.
No, no, I think that that's a good idea. We can... Why don't we extend the Chalmanac Rain of Terror until 10:30?
Second.
I'm actually unaware when the meeting is supposed to end, so...
It's supposed to close at 10.
I see, I see.
Yeah, so the motion has been made to extend the meeting. Motion is made and seconded to extend the meeting until 10:30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So if we could...
Okay, I move to approve the Arts Commission's recommendations for 2020 East Side Arts Partnerships, Special Projects, and Power Up Bellevue allocations, and direct staff to proceed with implementation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Any questions or comments? Again, thank you on behalf of the council for a job well done at the Arts Commission. We appreciate it very, very, very much. So with that, I will call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and is adopted. That brings us... We do not have any reports of the city manager. No reports... Actually, we do have council business to conduct. The first is to determine the proceeding for the election of the mayor and the deputy mayor at the council meeting on January 6. Do we have a brief staff report?
Given the hour and the number of items we have left on the agenda, I'll make this very brief. There are two options laid out in your packet for the selection process of the mayor and deputy mayor. Option one allows for simultaneous ballot voting. Option number two defaults to Robert's rules, and the nominees would need to be voted on order of nomination. If you have any questions or would like me to go into more detail, I'm happy to do so.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
I would assume so.
I move option one.
Second.
Okay, option one has been moved. That's the option that has been followed for, I believe, the last three elections.
Three cycles, yes.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on a seven to nothing vote. The next item then is to select a temporary chair for the January 6, 2020 meeting.
So again, it will be brief. The council has had a longstanding practice of designating a member to act as the temporary chair for overseeing the election of the mayor. Again, that will occur on January 6, 2020. The rules don't specify a process for selecting the temporary chair. However, historically, the council has used a nomination process from the floor and then voting on the nominations in order.
Okay, so this, we will take nominations. They do not need to be seconded. Is there a nomination to be the temporary chair? Yes.
I nominate Deputy Mayor Lynn Robinson to be the temporary chair for the January 6, 2020 council meeting.
Okay, Ms. Robinson has been nominated. Are there any nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing none, all closed nominations. All those in favor of Ms. Robinson being the temporary chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, I think. So that brings us to the consent calendar, and I would entertain a motion to adopt consent.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent calendar is adopted. That brings us to... Wow, are we on the agenda? That gets us to... Oh, we... Okay, so... Okay, so we do have up now the ordinance 6498, which is the temporary encampment ordinance. I believe there are some amendments that are being adopted that staff has drafted on behalf of council members. I think there may be four of them, maybe five.
There's only two.
Huh?
There's only two in the packet.
Well, okay, then maybe it's been cut down. So if you would...
Why don't we go ahead, and we could get a brief staff report?
Yes.
On some background information on the proposed ordinances. And staff are here. Mike Brennan is staff here to answer any questions. Mike?
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Chalmanac. Members of the council, also with me this evening to my right, Senior Planner Tony Pratt from Development Services Department. To my left, City Land Assistant City Attorney from the City Attorney's Office. Up before you tonight is amendment to the Land Use Code related to the permitting and code requirements for temporary encampments hosted by religious organizations. Just very quickly, just up to speed on where we are in the process, which initiated early in 2019, and then formally, the council initiated the code amendment process in September of 2019. There have been a number of study sessions, a public hearing, also a courtesy public hearing in front of the East Bellevue Community Council. We are here tonight on December 9, presenting, as requested by the council, a final draft ordinance for your consideration for final adoption. The content of that, at a high level, we will share with you, and Tony will kind of walk through the major elements of the ordinance in front of the council for your consideration. Tony?
So I'm going to talk to you very briefly about the draft ordinance. That's before you this evening. We are advancing Package 3, which was discussed at the November 25 study session meeting. And this was a package that council expressed interest in at the time. It modifies the public hearing, Luca. In regards to the first topic of health and safety, it aligns the standards to the consent decree per council decision. In regards to the second topic of neighborhood engagement, it removes the litter patrol requirement. It adds an optional post-issuance meeting, which may be mandated by the director, and it requires periodic certification with conditions of approval from the encampment host. Regarding the topic of duration and frequency, the ordinance maintains 90 days as an encampment maximum, that deployments can only occur once every 18 months, and that 180-day gap between deployments occurs from the end of one deployment to the start of the next. And then finally, in regards to the streamline permitting process, the eligibility for an encampment host shall be determined by a prior permit to the same site, not subject to revocation, and no sustained code enforcement actions beyond voluntary compliance. And the length of approval is three years.
So that is just a very brief report from the staff to the council. Again, before the council is ordinance number 6498, amending Chapter 20, 30U of the Land Use Code regarding temporary encampments for encampments hosted by religious organizations.
Okay. Do we have amendments that were drafted by staff? I don't think they were in the packet, but I understood there were some amendments that council members had requested.
My understanding is that there are two amendments in... Two or three amendments that... Well, staff prepared three amendments. Two should be in the council members' packets. One amendment A is green, and Amendment B is yellow.
Do you know what? I left my... They're in the desk packet, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and I left my desk packet in the other room. I apologize. So I don't have them in front of me. Can I get a copy of them?
There is also a third pink amendment. I'm not sure if that's been circulated at this time yet.
Okay, so what we have is... So, yes, Mr. Stokes?
I move to amend Section 4 of ordinance...
Just a second.
All right.
If you would put it before us, so that we can then make them...
I'd like to move that we approve ordinance 6498.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve ordinance 6498. That is now before us. So let's just ask, because I think... So my understanding this morning was there were sort of two ways of dealing with the 180-day rule. So here's what I understood. So, and I am wanting to make sure that we get this done tonight and we get it done correctly, so that a ordinance can be presented.
I think you're looking for this.
Okay. There was one that was dealing with the 180-day and potentially doing away with the 180-day. There was another that would be essentially like that, but ultimately, it would be doing away with the 180-day, but applying it to a half-mile radius. There was... And was that... I believe that...
I can clarify for you. In your desk packet, the Amendment A, which is green, is an amendment that removes the 180-day citywide gap from ordinance 6498. Amendment B is yellow. It removes the 180-day gap as well in a manner that provides only one encampment at a time may operate in the city. So they are... Those two amendments are two different ways to eliminate the 180-day citywide gap.
And I am sorry, I am missing the difference between the distinctions.
The difference is that Amendment B, the yellow one, provides that one encampment may operate in the city at a time. So there would be no gap within the city, but it could move from one hosting to a different church hosting one after the next.
I'm really sorry. I know this, and I'm not getting it. I apologize.
So let me try to clarify. So Amendment A, the green one, does the... Eliminates the 180-day gap that would exist across the entire city. So an encampment would be hosted someplace in the city. At the end of that encampment, there would need to be a wait of 180 days before another encampment could be hosted. That amendment, if you eliminate the 180 days, would also allow multiple encampments to occur in the city simultaneously.
Oh.
Amendment B eliminates the 180-day gap to allow a continuation of hosting across the city year-round, but it would limit the number of encampments that could occur in the city at any time to one, which is consistent with the current practice of the... Under the code, with the gap that exists now of a maximum of one encampment per year within the city operating simultaneously within the city.
Okay, so they basically deal with the same sections. They do slightly different things. So Mr... Mr. Stokes has asked to make the motion, I believe. I believe he wants to move Amendment A.
Yeah, I move to amend Section 4 of ordinance number 6498, but striking the first two sentences of the amended section 20 dot 30U dot 125A5 of the Bellevue Land Use Code, eliminating the minimum citywide gap between temporary encampments, which would have the effect of...
Okay. Well, I think we don't have to go into the effect. So that has been moved. Is there a second to the green motion? I am not seeing a second to the green motion at this moment. I would declare that that motion dies, and we would move to the yellow motion. Is there a motion to approve the yellow motion?
I move that we approve Amendment B, which is to amend Section 4 by replacing the first two sentences of the amended section, blah, 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 and then replacing the... Let's see, and then we add...
So we've got the motion. We have it here in front of us.
You know what it is.
You're not explaining it. You're... Okay. So motion, Amendment B has been moved. Is there a second?
Okay.
Can I second? Under Roberts, I know I can't make a motion.
I'm going to need to double-check on that. You cannot make a motion. I believe that you can second.
Can I ask a process question?
Okay, so I'm going to have a point of order here, and I'm going to try to figure this out. So not knowing that, I'm going to ask Ms. Zahn that... I'm just going to take it as a point of order here.
Well, I'm sorry. The reason I haven't actually voted, I'm just trying to understand when we take on these amendments, does that... Are we entertaining the amendments in front of us, anything else, and then we vote? And that's it? Or is there more discussion? I'm just trying to understand the process before I raise my hand.
So we do not have a motion that is proper. I appreciate that. We do not have a motion that is properly in front of us, so we can't discuss anything until there's a motion that's properly in front. The ordinance is... Yeah, so we do not have an amendment that is before us. Do we know if I can second? Okay, I believe I can.
I believe you can. Except it just has to have two at the same time. Exact same thing, except it just adds there shouldn't be one at the same time.
Okay. I'm going to second the... I'm going to second the motion that was made to amend the ordinance. And we can have a discussion of it. The first thing I would like to do again is ask staff to explain what this yellow ordinance means in practical terms.
Okay, so again, what exists in the draft ordinance, the base ordinance that is before the council, is a requirement that there's a 180-day gap between the end of any encampment in the city and the start of another one, and that would be across the entire city. This amendment would amend that gap, would eliminate that gap. So you could have continuation, moving one encampment, currently 90 days in one location, to another location for 90 days, et cetera, to have a continuation. This motion would also clarify that only one encampment can exist in the city at a time, so that wouldn't allow multiple encampments to occur in the city at the same time. So again, it would be one encampment, but it could continue at different locations, end to end, across the city for the entire year.
Well, it... The entire time, it can move as permitted.
Exactly. As permitted for 90 days under the ordinance at any one location, but you could put them back to back. There would not be a requirement for any separation between encampments.
So it could be at a different location, because we still have the locational, which is an 18-month, which I believe runs from the start of the encampment?
That's correct.
I think that's the way the...
The language reads that it would be at that site. One at that site per 18 months.
Okay. I thought that there was somebody who also wanted to offer, if we were to do this, to offer a half-mile buffer between sites, but... I'm sorry, so I'm mixing. We're talking to this councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. And I was going to ask a question. I wasn't going to speak to it. But if this passes, I will have another mo... I will have a motion to amend. I just...
Is it germane to this?
It will be. I'll put a buffer. I'll put a buffer in. But that's... My question is for staff. I had a question.
Yeah, okay.
Just to clarify your comment, or to clarify the questions you were asking.
Okay.
So, Mr. Brennan, so if this amendment passes and the underlying ordinance passes, in theory, we could have five churches, all within a three-block area, who could take turns hosting, and it would be continuously in that location, three months, three months, three months, three months, and go back around to be there in that, in those same five properties continuously. Is that right?
So under this, that scenario is a possibility, yes. That could happen.
Thank you. And when we start debating the merits of this, I'd like to speak again. That was just a question. Thanks.
Okay. You could move to amend the amendment to add that buffer. And you... I'm just thinking you might get sort... Yes, Councilmember Zahn?
I think that's why I'm trying to understand process, because I did talk with staff about another amendment, but it wasn't complete with my whole thought. And so I wanted to understand when I might talk about that. And it does include a radius. And yet, at the same time, I want to talk about the 90 days versus 120 days. And so I'm just trying to understand from a process standpoint how that's...
Okay. Well, we had asked... Well, we had asked to give staff time to draw up the amendments, and I thought you had some time to do that, that you had been talking with Councilmember Zahn about, I had not heard about the length of stay of the encampments, that... Okay.
For the staff.
Yes.
Relevant to what's being talked about. Thank you. To the staff, I thought the staff mentioned, location has some legal problems. Location requirements, true or false?
I think there is a legal framework that applies to this entire regulatory chapter, including the restrictions on location, frequency, as well as any other requirements that could be considered to burden religious practice.
Oh, so it's all of that, not just location itself? I was told by staff that location would have legal ramifications. The others, okay, open for discussion. So now you're telling me it's not a special restriction for location, right? Yes or no?
Well, I guess as Ms. Lynn notes, the whole framework of this regulation, location is, the duration, frequency, those are all regulated under the current framework in the baseline ordinance. So again, modifications to those which are being considered now are in front of the case.
Okay, so to confirm, location is a fair game, just like duration and others?
Yes.
Okay? That's good. Thank you.
What does that mean?
What does that mean? I don't think, I mean, I think that there's location, I'm not sure what Councilmember Lee was exactly asking about, but I understand, could you explain, is there, there was discussion at the last council meeting regarding this, regarding, could you have sections of the city that, where it, but if it was hosted in one section, it could not be hosted in that section, would have to move some, if a church in another section of the city would be able to host it? And I think that's what Councilmember Lee is asking about.
I was told this morning that location is not legally defensible by law.
I'm not aware of such a conversation. I apologize. I'm not 100% sure what your question is, Councilmember.
I was thinking that location is one of the considerations, that, you know, that if the two operating sites, they have to be separated by certain requirement restrictions. And I was told that, no, that's a no-no. Okay?
So...
And we talk about length, everything's good, gap, everything's good. Okay, when I mention locations, that, no, locations are the question. So that's not the case.
Maybe it would be helpful to move off of the prior conversation that maybe there was some miscommunication, and just consider the amendment that is on the table now and the policy implications of that. And I believe that amendment is the amendment for one...
Are you telling me how to run the meeting?
Oh.
Seriously?
I apologize, ma'am.
Yeah. I'm really sorry. So, we're trying to get through to this as to what exactly is before us, and how we, how, if, if, because I was under the impression that some council members wanted to, and so I'm just not seeing the amendment written, and I don't see, it wasn't me, but I'm not seeing the amendment written, and I can't figure out why it's not written up. So, I think the answer is, this is the motion that is before us, unless someone wants to make an amendment to the motion, we should speak to the motion and then vote on it. And someone may be able to make an amendment to the motion if they wanted to add a location, a locational restriction. So, Ms. Rob, Robinson, you wanted to speak to it.
Thank you. So I made the motion for this Amendment B, because I wanna remove the gaps between the encampments, so that they can go back-to-back, if that's what's required of the population we're trying to serve, and that there would be a continuity of services. But I also believe that we're, our city is best served if there's one encampment going on at a time. And so this motion that I made removes the gap, but puts in language that there shall be no more than one temporary encampment in the city at any time.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak in opposition to this amendment. I think the draft that we had without the amendment is probably just about right. We've had people from the neighborhoods want it to be stricter, and we've had people from the faith communities wanting it to be looser, and I've found that if everyone's a little bit unhappy, it's probably fair and balanced. So, I'm in my years on the council. So, and I'd like to, the reason I think that this is not a good amendment, or not a positive amendment, one, we have been operating under consent decree for a number of years that has worked very well. We haven't had problems with, we've had some problems with the encampments themselves and how they've impacted neighborhoods, but we have not had problems with there being a demand for encampments that have exceeded the host, church's ability to serve, to host them and to serve them. We've also had a neighborhood that has been unfairly burdened with the vast majority of the encampments. As proposed, we could have five churches, all within a couple of blocks of each other, continuously have an encampment, which would have a dramatic impact on the culture, quality of life of that area. There is nothing in the code today that stops, or under the consent decree as we've been operating, that stops any church or place of worship from serving people experiencing homelessness. Not one thing, as long as they serve them within their walls, subject to the building code, of course. And so, there, people can serve those in need, and I think they should, and they do. And I think that's very good. And as the court has said, cities are allowed to balance the, for public health, safety, and welfare, the needs of how a church operates their services, particularly with regard to encampments. And the court in Washington has said that encampments, unlike serving people inside the sanctuary or inside the walls of the church, encampments have more impact on the surrounding neighborhoods than they probably do on the average parishioner who attends a church. That is probably the opposite of people, if churches serve the people inside their walls. If they truly want to serve people 24/7, 365, they can, but, and doing so would be less burdensome on the neighborhoods. I'm very concerned if this goes through, that we will have encampments. First of all, there's two encampments on the east side, so how do we pick what gets to be in Bellevue at any one time, if only one is allowed? But second of all, it would unfairly burden one particular neighborhood, or unfairly burdens the cities. There's a lot better ways to serve people who are experiencing homelessness, including in the shelter that we help fund, and the one that will be permanently built, including Sophia Way that's inside the walls at Temple Benetora. There's a lot better ways to do it than encampments, and that have a lot better outcome for the community as a whole. So I will be voting no, and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Okay. Further comment on the motion? Councilmember Stokes?
Well, I just don't agree with the rationale and...
Councilmember, it's comment on the motion to amend. I apologize. I got it. Thank you.
Is that okay?
That is, yes, that's perfect. I just wanted to clarify it.
Right. One, it's, that's, what's the legal term? It's not part of the real decision made by the court, and I don't think the court was saying what you're interpreting on that, and I disagree with that. And I think we are, and yes, having permanent indoor shelters will be the best thing. We don't have them, and it will be two to three years before we have one, except that one temporary for men, and there are other needs. And this is, I think, and I, I, I mean, we can, we can gavel on it, but I think this is unfortunately saying that the needs of, one, the faith community and their rights, and the needs of the people, women, children, and men, who need shelter, are being denied because we think tent cities aren't as good as being inside. And tent cities can work very well, tent cities can work not well. Inside shelters can work well, inside shelters can work not well. That's a, that's a false choice on that. And it was just an offhand comment by the court, and we can't make that the central part of the decision. And yes, there are impacts on the neighborhood, but there are also impacts on people living in our city. And there are, the impacts on those people are multitudes, more than neighbors, and if we do the thing right, which I think we have this set up, we can mitigate that. And we're just, we're playing off two groups against each other and making decisions, that instead of saying, what, what comports with our vision statements, with our, and what a couple of people have pointed out, and there are a lot of things that we've been saying in terms of Bellevue and its responsibility, and we're looked at as trying to be a leader in addressing these issues, and then we back off. And we don't want to allow more than one city at a time, this seems very arbitrary, one in a city at a time. I just, I'm just concerned that we're in the, we're not balancing the overall, looking at the whole community, looking at the people who are in need, looking at the, the rights of the faith community, and thanking them for actually engaging in this, and at the same time, looking for, and saying that, once again, oh, I don't wanna be this inconvenience, or I don't wanna have a problem in my neighborhood, so don't help these people. And it just bothers me, that we, we have belittled this in this way. I wish that there was a better way to do it. That's why I think the other amendment was better, and, I don't know, I'm just, I think we're missing opportunity to really move forward and not be stuck in what we were doing 14 years ago.
I would ask for somebody to move to extend the meeting till 10:45.
I move that we extend the meeting to 10:45.
I will vote no.
Moved and seconded to extend the meeting to 10:45. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Have you completed your thought? I just wanted to, I just wanted to interrupt to make sure we got that motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Other council members wish to speak to the motion to amend? Councilmember Zahn.
So I've been listening to my fellow colleagues and thinking about what ordinance changes makes sense that really looks at what the Arlopa allows from the standpoint of the city putting restrictions on the religious freedoms of expression, as well as being cognizant of the, of the neighborhood effect of having a tent encampment in the area. And so as I've been reflecting on this, I will be passing out an amendment that the staff and I actually, I just got it later today, so I didn't get a chance to vet it, that's why I didn't just put it out there, that we'll be offering up a radius in lieu of no 180-day gap, because I do inherently believe that I have a hard time being able to defend 180-day gap citywide, because as I brought up at the last meeting, I'm having a hard time understanding a neighborhood effect if you have a tent encampment in South Bellevue, and then the next one is in Northwest Bellevue, what that effect might be, but I can understand that there would be a localized effect of that area.
So if this motion is defeat, okay, I'm just running this through my mind. If this motion is defeated, and your motion is to, and I'm just talking out loud here, if your motion is to also do away with the 180-day gap, but apply a radius, so, I honestly think the, the right way to go would be to amend this motion to apply the radius to it, have the vote on that, because I, I think if this goes down to defeat, I'm not sure parliamentary-wise that you can bring that back up. So I think in, in the correct order, it would be to add that to it. So is there language that would do that?
Yes. I don't know how this works.
So, the, the language that was written for Councilmember Zahn...
I can read that.
Okay, so it is, it, I'm just looking, yeah, hand, hand these out. Okay, so in this case, it adds, instead of striking that entire paragraph and only leaving temporary encampments may be located at the same site no more than once every 18 months, it says temporary encampments, temporary encampment use shall be permitted within one, shouldn't that be, shall not be?
No. It says no temporary.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I missed that. No temporary encampment use shall be permitted within one-half mile of any site where a temporary encampment use under LUC 2030U has operated within the prior 180-day period, and then would conclude with a temporary encampment may be located at the same site no more than once every 18 months. So essentially, could you, could staff explain what this would do?
Okay, so in this instance, if there were an encampment, let's just say Temple Benetora hosts an encampment, at the end of that encampment, Temple Benetora could not host for, they would be limited to their, their 18-month limitation at the site, but also the properties within one-half-mile radius of the Temple Benetora property would also be limited to their ability to host an encampment, they'd have to wait 180 days. So that radius area would be a no encampment for 180 days, is what this amendment would do.
Okay, so a church within that location, within a half-mile location, if you used Temple Benetora as an example, would have the 180-day limitation applied, but other churches throughout the city would not? And these are, these are limited essentially to religious organization?
That's correct.
Okay. So I believe the correct parliamentary procedure at this point would be for Councilmember Zahn to move a, to move a substitute amendment, which would be this amendment, so a substitute to the amendment.
A secondary amendment.
Secondary amendment.
It would be an amendment of the amendment.
Well, be...
Because she, I assume that she...
Okay. Either, either way, I just, I just wanna make sure, I, because I, I thought there was a three, three, three amendment limit to an amendment, and that's why this was called a substitute. As long as there is, as long as it is, everybody is in agreement, we can consider this, I would, whatever it happens to be, an amendment to the amendment.
Do you want to substitute the entire language of the amendment?
Yes.
I think that makes it a substitute.
It does, sure.
Yeah. Okay. So the proper would be to move a substitute amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So if you would move, if you would move the Zahn amendment C...
C.
As a sub, yeah, substitute amendment C. Is there a second? I will second.
I will second.
Okay. Council, Deputy Mayor seconds. Okay, so this is before us now, and those who have already discussed can also discuss this as well. But Councilmember Zahn, I know you did a little bit of explanation for this, could you provide your thoughts?
So as I've been thinking about all the comments we've been getting, what keeps, I'm looking at this from the standpoint that we have, we are allowed as a city to look at the effects of tent encampments to the extent that then we can put some restrictions on the religious freedom of expression. So when I think about this amendment C... So when I think about this amendment C, it accounts for the effect of the proximity of a tent encampment to some radius, but it does not overly restrict tent encampments in other parts of the city that may not be anywhere close to that particular neighborhood. So in my mind, it does not unduly restrict and at the same time, it does create public safety and health for the community closest to the site of the tent encampment. So that's why I'm offering this.
Okay, are there any others who wish to speak to this? Council member Robertson.
I do. As I said, I support the ordinance as written, but I'd like to make a motion to amend the substitute. And that is to add back in the first sentence that, that came from amendment B, that there shall be no more than one temporary encampment in the city at any time. So it would read, A5 would read, there shall be no more than one temporary encampment in the city at any time, followed by no temporary encampment shall, use shall be permitted within, and I changed the one-half to just one, within one mile of any site where a temporary encampment use under LUC, LUC 2030U has operated within the prior 180-day period. And then the last sentence, a temporary encampment may be located at the same site no more than once every 18 months. So what that does is it pulls the sentence that deputy mayor Robinson proposed in amendment B and puts it into amendment C and it changes the one-half mile radius to one mile. And that, because a one-half mile is an eight to 10 in a walk, I think that one mile, a half mile could still be pretty close, one mile would be a minimum. And so I would make that a motion to amend and would ask for a second.
Second. Moved and seconded to amend the amendment. Any further discussion of the amended amendment?
Yes, I, I mean, I think unfortunately, we're just going towards being more restrictive each time we're looking at this. And this is, this is an extremely restrictive motion and I don't think it serves anybody's purpose except just saying, we really don't want these shelters in the city, except in a very limited way. And I, I just, I just don't understand why we're such a rush to do this instead of going the other way of trying to do the most we can to help children, women and men who are homeless find someplace that's safer than being in the streets or having to go count serve somewhere or whatever else until we can get our act together, both in the city and the region, to provide more housing and to provide shelters. And we're not there yet. And this just seems to me, a step back and I, I think it doesn't comport with things we, some good sounding things we have in our vision statements. So I, I, I'm just.
Okay, thank you.
That's my.
Others who wish, you've already spoken to it, I think, in your explanation, Ms. Zahn, I want to have others speak to it. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I want to be sure I understand all that, you know, just for the sake of making sure that we, you know, didn't mean anything with others. If I'm hearing correctly, Ms. Robertson's proposal or, yeah, amendment to the amendment is that we will accept the staff's recommendation, which is basically, you know, making a change that the encampment can actually, there's no gap basically, as long as we meet the requirement of the location within one-mile radius. I think that's an improvement for the desirability of taking care of our homeless people. Right now, we have a 12-month gap. And I think by doing this, I believe that we are not going to have a 12-month gap. If we find another location that can be hosted as long as it's within the geographic limitation, I think that's an improvement, if I'm correct. Is that correct, Ms. Robertson?
That's, that's, that's my, oh, may I answer, sorry, mayor?
Thank you. I just wanted.
Okay, yeah, it's okay, yeah. Just very quickly, it's really a question to staff, but I think.
Staff can answer, that's fine.
Staff can answer.
So again, this, this amendment, as I understand being presented, would eliminate the 180-day gap that exists in draft ordinance before the council. So that 180-day gap across the city would be eliminated. You could have an encampment anywhere in the city within that year period except for within a one-mile radius of where the previous encampment existed.
Thank you. I think that's what I said, right? Correctly. I think as long as, I think we realize there are enough religious organizations that are willing to host it. I think that would be a very good improvement to continue to host, you know, our homeless people.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noonhouse and, yeah.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Yeah, I mean, originally I was in support of package three, but seem to be bearing off course now. And I, I really appreciate council member Stokes' passion for, for this issue, but I'd like this amendment from council member Robertson is because I don't feel personally that the half-mile is further enough that it could still impact some of those same residents or same neighborhoods which we're trying to avoid here. Yes, we want to provide a, a safe encampment for those children, families and, and women, et cetera. But again, for me, it comes down to balance and compromise and I have to take those neighborhoods and residents into, into account. So I do feel like this amendment is, is, is the right way to go if we're going to go to this approach, but originally I was much more in favor of package three, but happy to support this amendment.
Deputy mayor, you have not spoken to this, if you wish to speak.
I don't wish to speak.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm, I basically, I'm gonna speak in favor of the way this has been amended with the combination of the Zahn and Robertson amendment. And I think what we're gonna do is vote and then we can have a vote on the final ordinance and we can make our statements.
Just clarification, sir. So this, this does limit it to only one shelter at a time.
This would, this, this, yeah, this would, actually, I believe, one encampment at a time was what was proposed in the ordinances was drafted following direction from the city council. It would retain, it would retain that, however, it would also, however, it would allow within, it would allow an encampment to move to a church that is more than one mile away from the, the encampment and essentially be in succession. But it would have to be at least one mile away.
But with, with no gap?
Correct.
Correct. Arguably, this is less restrictive than what we do now and what we had proposed, what was proposed for us. So this is actually, in my mind, less restrictive.
I have two questions. For staff.
Very, yes. And you know what, we're gonna need to, did we extend to 45?
Yes.
We need another 15.
I move that we extend the meeting to 11 o'clock. Second.
Moved and seconded to extend to 11 o'clock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
So I have two questions for staff. I'm sorry for asking this one, but are we voting on a 90-day maximum or a 120-day maximum at this point?
So the base ordinance that is included in, in your packet is, at the direction of council, 90-day max.
Okay. And then we had talked about the legalities of having a radius and you had recommended the .5. Do you feel that the one mile is going to change anything in terms of being defensible for the city?
I think generally, the legal framework is that the, it would depend based on the facts and of the specific circumstances and the impact that the proposed radius would have on any given host's ability to host an encampment. The basis for the half-mile radius suggestion was not so much a legal line in the sand as that is consistent with the radius adopted in the Homeless Uses Services Luca earlier this year, I believe, and for impacts of that homeless services use. And similarly, 0.5 miles is consistent with the requirement that the encampments be located within that distance from transportation, public transportation, which would set the expectation, corresponding expectation that residents of temporary encampments would potentially be walking within that half-mile radius. And that was the basis for that.
And that's for a permanent site as opposed to what we're talking about, which is a temporary site.
That's correct.
Okay, so with that, I think we have all had an opportunity to speak. What is before us is kind of a conglomeration, but it is actually a change in motion that was moved and I believe I seconded it by council member Robertson. This is the, this is a vote on that amendment, which keeps in the language, there shall be no more than one temporary encampment in the city at any time and the 180-day applies to church, and 180 days would go away for the entire city but would apply to a one-mile radius around a church. And am I stating that correctly, council member, and that's the effect? Okay, so that is before us at this moment?
I didn't understand, what, how does 180 days apply to that mile?
They can't be within that mile.
They cannot be within, so if, if there, yeah, within 180 days of the other encampment.
I think that's a gap that you're describing and I believe, isn't it that the church cannot, the, when can, when can the same church, oh, that's 18 months.
That's 18 months.
So we did not remove the gap in this? I thought we did.
It's the citywide gap versus the hosting return.
Right.
The hosting return, no one has made a motion to amend where they can only do one every 18 months.
Right.
This is that no temporary encampment use shall be permitted within one mile of any site where a temporary encampment use has operated within the prior 180-day period. So instead of 180-day gap citywide, it's a 180-day gap within any one-mile area between, and then 18 months for the same, return to the same site.
So then we're putting a gap back in?
No, only in a one-mile area.
We're taking the proposed gap out for everything except.
Okay, gotcha.
Churches within a one-mile area of the.
Last encampment.
Church that last hosted an encampment. A question?
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to understand this. So the, the 180-day gap would still apply to the church. Say if a church starts right now, they have 180-day.
18 months.
And if they want to go, if they want to return to the same site, there's a 180-day gap?
No, there is. To return to the same site, there remains the 18 months. Okay, this is.
Well, it's a 15-month gap, yeah.
Well, depending on where you start counting from, but we do start counting from the start of the encampment. So it's an 18-month gap that a individual church could re-host a tent city as we have had a requirement that there not be more than one in the city and that there be a citywide, I think, 18-month. I may be wrong on that.
It was a year, it was a year under the ordinance.
The citywide is one per year.
Okay, citywide is one per calendar year. Okay, so the 180 days applies to the other, so as drafted, 180 days would apply to no ordinance at any church in the city after a church within the city hosts an encampment. This contracts that and only applies that 180-day gap to a one-mile radius of the church that has just hosted. So a church within that would not be able to host in, for 100, it would have to wait 180 days to be able to host if you're within a mile. So, but if you are a church that is outside of a mile, if, and in this case, let's say the, I believe it was a Methodist church that's near me, if they wanted to host, they could host it immediately following the conclusion of it. We use the example of Temple Benetora. They are well outside that one-mile gap.
Just, so what, where's the 18 months apply? What's the difference?
To the same site.
To the same site.
To the same site.
Well, the site within one mile.
So then where the 180-day gap apply?
The 180-day gap applies to, as drafted, every church in the city. As amended, as the, this amendment does, it applies only to churches within a one-mile radius of a church that has just hosted.
Okay, so I'm just trying to say, so if Temple, if the temple decided to, has, has one in operation and once the 90 days is over, they can't apply, they can't do another one for 18 months?
15.
15, it says 18.
It's 18 months from the beginning of the encampment, which means if it's 90 days, it's 15 months from the end of the encampment.
Okay.
Depends on how you count.
And then where does the 180-day gap between deployments? That's the same thing, isn't it? Deployment?
18 months and 1, no, 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 John. So please, when does the 180 days run? When does it begin running? And under the amendment by Ms. Robertson, what would it apply to?
The 180-day gap begins running at the end of an encampment deployment. And under Ms. Robertson's amendment, it would apply to any potential hosts that are within a mile radius of the church or religious host that most recently hosted.
So in fact, I believe it was the rabbi who testified tonight about the distances from a number of churches that are located near Temple Benetora. So those are examples of the churches that under a mile would not be able to host for 180 days after the conclusion of one at Temple Benetora?
Correct.
Okay, is this making sense? Is this, I don't want to say making sense. Do people understand the effect?
Okay, I just want to make sure. I mean, you're, you're absolutely saying that the 180, there are two rules. One, the, if Temple Benetora is, their, their encampment ends, they have to wait 18 months or 15 months, whatever, 15 months.
Yes.
So what, where is the 180-day deployment come in?
To every church within one mile of Temple Benetora.
So they couldn't, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes, well, we will wait for you.
Yes, currently in the code, there is a citywide.
Right.
Gap or frequency and that is one per year and there is, and then 180-day citywide gap. And I'm sorry, not in the code, but in the current framework. And then there is a requirement for one hosting every 18 months at the same site. So the ordinance as amended is one hosting at the same site every 18 months. And then the citywide provision would only be, and there would be no citywide provision, the 180-day gap only applies within a one-mile radius of the last host.
So if one church has a shelter and 180 days, during that time period, where else could you locate one?
Anywhere in the city that's not within the one-mile radius of where it was last located.
Okay.
That's what the 180-day gap would apply to. The rest of the city, you could locate encampment elsewhere as long as you're outside of that one-mile radius area around the last.
So it's basically two, two things to look at?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's an illustration.
Are we, are we, do, do we have, understand what we are voting on and are we ready to vote on the amendment? Okay, so the amendment is before us and then the, then the, well, the amendment is before us. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Any opposed? The amendment passes on a vote of seven to nothing, I believe. So now before us, if there are no further amendments, is the main motion.
We have to vote on the substitute motion.
Pardon me, yes.
Substitute.
We have to vote on the substitute motion as amended.
Well, okay, the main motion being the substitute.
No, the motion to amend, that was a substitute motion that Janice made that I amended. We passed my amendment to her motion, and now we have to vote...
Okay, now we have to, yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And then we'll vote on the main motion after this one.
Okay, so we now have to move on, we now have to vote on the substitute as amended. All those, if there is no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion, did you vote no, mister?
Yep.
You're gonna vote no. So the motion passes, six to one, Councilmember Stokes opposed. We are about four minutes away. Do, how, we would now have before us the, the final main motion as amended. Are there any further amendments to be made? I would like, since I really kind of stayed away, I'd like to make just some brief comments regarding this. I think that this package meets the constitutional requirements. It places a reasonable balance. It is consistent with the record that we have received, which is that not only are there issues related to the deployment of an ordinance in the very immediate vicinity, but in a broader vicinity. And so I believe that this is a very defensible motion. It is less restrictive, but we're in a climate in which the courts are telling us, we need to be less restrictive, and we are balancing the right of a religious organization to minister to people with the ability to, to regulate time, place, and manner of the activity. I also want to thank the religious community, who has been a stalwart partner in our ability to deal with homelessness within this area, and I will leave it at that. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I, I, those are good words to say, and I can agree in general, but I just think we, we actually have missed an opportunity by restricting the number that could be in place at one time, when we also applied a screening factor. There's no reason you can't have one shelter in another part of town, mile away from another one. And I just think we lost an opportunity to actually address the needs more. This, again, this is a current crisis. This isn't a crisis that was happening 13 years ago, and it may be an incremental, maybe a difference, but I just think we missed an opportunity to do much, much better, that would not have any significant effect on the neighborhoods, and would actually have a positive effect on the needs out there, and one of these days, we're gonna have to address those. And that's just the way, I mean, the way I feel about it.
Okay. I am seeing nobody else who wishes to speak to this. I'm going to call for the question on final passage as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes on a vote of six to one, and we will put this together, and I'll be able to sign that hopefully tomorrow. It'll, it'll take a little while to get it together, sign the rest of everything that's been passed.
Can we quickly pass the next two?
What's that?
Can we just make a motion to some next two?
Yeah, can we just make a motion?
So I move to adopt ordinance 6499.
Second.
Okay, and this is, ordinance 6499 is related to the comprehensive transportation project list. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. How about 6500?
I move to adopt ordinance 6500.
Second.
Moved and seconded to a pass 6500. This is amendments to the comprehensive plan as separately set forth in 6499. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes on a seven to nothing vote. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, thank you for sixteen great years. Thank you for two great years as the mayor of the city. Seeing no further business to come before the council, we're adjourned.